We're good, Amy's here, so.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. It's March 17th, 2021. My name is Robert Cagnetta, and this is the meeting of the South Kingstown Rhode Island Zoning Board of Review. Members present tonight are Thomas Daniels, our Vice Chairman, Richard Jerzak, William Mark, Bill Rosen, and Chaky, uh, Chaky, Casey Charke Wick, excuse me. Also President Jamie Gorman, our South Kingstown Building Zoning Official. Amy Goins, the South Kingstown Special Legal Counsel, and Jessica Spence, the Administrative Support Associate. This board is made up of seven people, and five of them are regular voting members. Five members are required to be present for voting. In the event that one of the five members are not present, an alternate will step in in the case of tonight. And then we'll use another alternate zoning board member. So, tonight, our voting members will be myself, Thomas Daniels, Richard Jerzak, William Mark, and Bill Rosen. Casey Charke Wick will act as a alternate until after the first is over, and Mr. Mark will step down for the rest of the meeting. Applicants are either here for a variance, dimensional use, or seek to use a special use permit. This board is a quasi judicial body created by the South Kingstown Ordinance pursuant to state statutes. We don't follow strict rules of evidence, and we operate in what we believe to be a fair and equitable manner. We try to let everyone speak unless they get carried away or determined not to be relevant. Also, we're going to ask you for the interest of time to be brief, but also stay on point. So if it's been mentioned before, and we've recognized that very thing has been mentioned before, I might gently remind you that it was mentioned before, but we'll try not to sort of harp on the singular issue once we've been made aware of it. And then we do our best not to argue and keep things civil, and we'll try to hear our last petition by 10 o'clock. When your petition is called, please come forward and clearly state your name and spell it for the record. And Jessica will let you know how to do that via Zoom. Please speak clearly so we can all hear you. You will then be asked to take an oath to tell the truth, and then you can present your petition along with other witnesses to testify and support. The board will then ask you or your witnesses questions. After the petitioner has presented their testimony, anyone else with questions about the application or wanting to support or oppose the petition will then be asked to come forward. They will then identify themselves, be sworn in, and present their testimony, which may be followed up by questions from the board. Please don't ask any of the petitioners or any other witnesses directly. We will do that for you. And we'll, we'll allow that petitioner to answer any questions raised by the audience that are made through the board. After hearing all testimony and before a vote is taken, board members will be asked to openly discuss the evidence presented. And so you're aware, special use permits or variances require four out of five voting members to vote in favor of the petition to grant the requested relief. Board members will ask a lot of questions for good reason. We cannot just grant anything we choose. There are rules per the South Kingstown Zoning Ordinance. You must give testimony to support certain facts to allow your request to be approved. Tonight, we have dimensional variances and special use permits on the agenda. For variances, you must offer evidence to the board setting forth the following: hardships due to unique characteristics of the subject land or the structure, and is not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. The hardship is not the result of any prior action on your part. The granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. The relief requested is the least relief necessary. You will also show that the hardship will be suffered if the variance is not granted will amount to more than a mere inconvenience. If you are here for a special use permit, you must present the following: that the special use permit you're requesting is specifically authorized by the zoning ordinance. Where somewhere in the zoning ordinance, it has to be authorized and stated to that it can happen on that parcel, or else we do not have the power to grant it. The special use permit is requested meets all the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance that authorizes such special use. And that granting this special use permit will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area or the impair the purpose or the intent of the zoning ordinance. And tonight, we are gonna have two items on the agenda that are going to be continued. And then I wanted to see about some of the folks that are going last to see if they want to join us next week, but. So, just to start out, we have what is seventh on the agenda, which is the petition of Arthur Premantier of 15 Tomahawk Trails, South, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, 02879 for the dimensional variance. And this is for the premises located at 15 Tomahawk Trail. Is someone here for that petition tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, John Kenyon, Attorney for the applicant. I submitted a letter requesting a continuance until your April 21st meeting. One of the neighbor's attorney has submitted a memorandum and would like some time to respond to it.
Okay. All right. Would a board member like to make a motion to continue this to the April 21st meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Rosen makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mark.
Second by Mr. Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's until, thank you, Mr. Kenyon, April 21st.
Thank you.
The second is the petition of Winding Road Compassion Center of 72 Pine Street, first floor Providence, Rhode Island, 02903 for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance. And this is for the property located 682 Kingstown Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island. There's been a request to continue this till March 24th. Is there someone that's here for that petition?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman. We just have the letter on file.
Okay, Jessica, do you have that open?
I do.
Would you mind reading that, please?
From attorney Christine Ingustian dated March 12th. Dear Jessica, I thank you very much again for our conversation yesterday and the guidance you provided. I have consulted with the client representative, and they are requesting that the town move its special use permit application to the March 24th, 2021 meeting of the zoning board for hearing. If you have any questions, please advise. And then there's a few other things about, she's gonna get me a list of attendees.
So the request was for us to extend it to the March 24th, which is the next week's meeting. So is there someone who'd like to make a motion to extend this to the 24th, or continue it, rather?
Sure, I'll make a motion to continue the petition of Winding Road Compassion Center for a special use permit to the March 24th meeting.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosen. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we are continued to March 24th for that. Jessica, is there anything else? Oh, yes. So being that we still have another eight items on the agenda, it might be challenging for us to get to the last two, which is the petition of William Bodnar, and the next is the petition of Stephen Cooper. So I think in fairness to those folks, I might see if they want to continue now, so they don't have to wait three hours to see that it's actually continued. So if either one, so Jessica, would you remind folks, I'm sorry, how to raise their hand or make themselves known?
Sure, so if you're on computer, there's gonna be a little raise hand function at the bottom or the top of your screen. But I see you, Mr. Bodnar, so we'll come to you in a second. If you are calling in by phone, it is going to be star nine to raise your hand. Star six will mute and unmute you. So Mr. Bodnar is here.
Okay, so.
He can go ahead and speak.
Mr. Bodnar?
Yes, I would prefer not to continue it where we're waiting to have this approved before we can apply for a building permit. And so I've, I would, as much, I really appreciate if it could be, stay on the agenda, and maybe we can get to it.
That's fine. We could do that, and we'll do our best to get through everything, and yeah, I don't mind keeping it on there. Okay. Jessica, how about Cooper?
He just actually logged on, so I don't know that he heard what we were talking about.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Cooper, you are last on the agenda, and it might be challenging to get to you by 10 o'clock. You're welcome to stay on until 10 o'clock, but we're also offering, if you wanted to come back next week, then we'll probably hear you first next week at 7 o'clock, because what's after is gonna be, take a little bit longer.
What, um, what are the odds that I would be heard tonight? Is there a?
I would consider it pretty low. And it's only next Wednesday, but if, if it's up to you.
So otherwise, hang on. If I did stay on, and it would just potentially, meeting could close, and it would be put forward to the next meeting anyway, is that correct?
That's right. Yep, no different. Really, it's just waiting for a few hours, you know?
Okay, all right, I guess it sounds like the best move then is to move on to next Wednesday.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you. I mean, you know, there's, there's a lot of glasses of wine between now and 10 o'clock, so.
Well, I don't mind waiting. I just don't want you folks to be there at, you know, I don't, I don't want to wait till the end, and then if the meeting closes, I don't know if that would be, if that can happen, that's.
Yeah, no, that's fine. We would just continue whatever's left at 10 o'clock till next Wednesday, so.
Okay, I mean, or I could, you're running till 10, right?
So. You can check in in a little while and see where we're at.
All right, I might as well, I might as well hang on then, because I can just watch what's going on.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So Jess, is there anything else that we needed to go over first?
Um, just if anyone is viewing and they haven't seen the documents, everything is available to view online at southkingstownri.com under building and zoning, current zoning applications. So the complete record is available to view online if anyone's missed it. The other thing I just want to say is anyone who is a panelist, I'm gonna be turning off your video until your petition is called, but other than that, that's about it.
And anyone, as you're presenting, feel free to ask, ask us to show whatever you've submitted through Jessica through the town. We have the ability to put it up on screen, so. All right. So first on the agenda is the petition of Jocelyn and Thomas Leska of 258 Kettle Pond Drive, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, 02879. For a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows: The applicant is seeking to construct an eight-foot by 38-foot covered porch closer to the front property line than allowed. The ground level is covered porch, and front stair will be located 29 feet from the front property line. The required front yard setback is 40 feet. Relief of 11 feet is requested. Lot size is .47 acres. The dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance section 207, which is non-conforming lots of record building setback requirements. And section 907 are standards of relief. Owners of the property are Jocelyn B. and Thomas A. Leska for premises located at 258 Kettle Pond Drive, South Kingstown Assessor's Map 81-2 Lot 52, and is owned R40. And who is here for this petition tonight?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, before we get there, it should be noted that Mr. Jerzak has recused because he's a neighbor of the party. So in this instance, Mr. Charke Wick will be voting.
Great, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name's Sergio Turenzia for the applicants, Tom and Jocelyn Leska. If it's pleasing to the board, I'll begin my presentation, unless you need me to be sworn in.
Yes, so please state your name and spell it for the stenographer.
Sure, first name is just for the record, for the record, Sergio, S-E-R-G-I-O, Turenzia, that's spelled C-H-E-R-E-N-Z-I-A.
Okay.
And for the record, I am the principal and president of Turenzia Associates. Yeah, I'm sorry, bud.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, excellent. So go ahead, tell us who you are.
Yep, sorry about that. So for the record, once, once again, Sergio Turenzia. I'm the principal and president of Turenzia Associates, a land surveying and civil engineering company located in both Westerly and Westerly, Rhode Island, and Pawtucket, Connecticut. The plans that were presented to you tonight and the application that was filed was done under my responsible charge on behalf of the applicants, Tom and Jocelyn Leska. I am a licensed engineer in this, in the state of Rhode Island. The, the application before you tonight, once, once again, is for 258 Kettle Pond Drive located at Platte 81-2 Lot 52 in South Kingstown. Jess, is it appropriate for me to share my screen, or is this, or you, will you bring up a site plan?
You can share it if you'd like. It's your choice, or I can bring it up, whatever's easier for you.
I'll just bring up the screen. I'm just gonna bring up the site plan, which was filed, just to have something to speak to here. So sharing the screen now, this is the survey of the property with the proposed addition. As, as indicated by the variance request, the proposed improvements, and I'll zoom in here on the site plan, is a 38 by eight-foot covered porch on, front-covered porch. Currently, the house just has a, an existing stoop with stairs that approaches the front door. The covered porch would extend directly out from the front of the, the building in the same, the same, pretty much the, the face of the, the front of the building does not extend around the sides or, or towards the garage, just strictly off the, the front face of the building, extending out eight feet. And then with stairs that would also extend out with that for access, which aligns with the, the existing door. So none of this, none of the interior structure is gonna change. The garage is simply an addition of a front-covered porch with stairs for access. The landscaping in the front of the building would have to be torn out and relocated as part of this. The 12-inch diameter is a large tree on the, off the corner of the house. Some of the, the canopy will have to be cut back as this, the elevation of this porch is about 14 feet. It, it only extends as high as the first floor and has a more or less a shed roof that comes off the front. And it's only going to, the, the finished floor of the porch is going to be less than 30 inches above the, the ground. So it doesn't require a, any railing system. My client wanted to keep it low enough where it's open and inviting. Kind of the point of this is to be more engaging in the neighborhood and be more open for, and inviting on the, on the, on the street here. So that being said, as, as mentioned, we're requesting an 11-foot variance. It's about 29 feet. Once you include the additional, the stairs that are required beyond the eight-foot to get to ground level, which then lines up with the, the brick walkway, which there might be some minor modifications for, but doesn't fall into the purview of this, this board. The standards for relief of section 907A that this, the hardship which the applicant seeks to relieve is due to a unique characteristic of the subject structure and is not the general, it's not the general characteristics of the surrounding area. When my client purchased the property and the, and the home, it had already been constructed, and then they finished the structure. So as you can see, the, the structure itself is actually even slightly encroaches into the setback. So we hope this, through requesting this variance, that'll, that'll clear up that, that minor non-conformity, which once again was not of their doing. It was the previous, the previous owner who built the shell of the house, and then my clients had come in, and they, they finished the house after, after the initial, the initial structure was, was built. The hardship is not a result of any prior action of the applicant, and it does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. They simply want to put this addition on as, as I mentioned, as an aesthetic, as a modest addition. It allows them to spend some time in the front, front yard. It's more inviting, aesthetically pleasing. And in the days of COVID, also applies, allows for ample room for social distancing while remaining, you know, in, in the front of the, of the house, whereas they really don't have that opportunity as the, as the building stands now. As I mentioned, it's, it's not of their doing. It was a previous app, the previous owner who built the house so close to the front setback. The granting of the variance will not alter the general characteristic of the sounding area, surrounding area, or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comp plan for the town. If you drive, drive around this neighborhood and probably neighborhoods similar to it in South Kingstown, you know, covered porches are not, not generally uncharacteristic of the, of the area. The relief is the, the least relief necessary. The proposed covered porch, we attest is a modest and appropriate size, once again, fitting the character of the area. Eight feet is, is really what's required for, for a, for modest enjoyment of, of the property in this, in, in the front of the house. The, this is not a use variance, so that does not, there's no, nothing applicable to any use. There's still, it's still a residential use. And the hardship that will be suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is, is not granted, does merit, shall, does amount to more than a mere inconvenience. There really is no other reasonable alternative for enjoyment of the front of the property for, for ports like this. It's unreasonable for the, the applicant to have to move the entire structure just to accommodate this, to meet the setbacks. And it's, it's a modest request into that front setback. Should not really impair any, any visual or cause any adverse impact in, you know, from, from the road standpoint or the neighborhood standpoint. As, as mentioned, we're only requesting a variance for the front, nothing for the sides, obviously not the rear. So we feel that this is a reasonable request for, and more than, and it's, it's, it amounts to the grant, granting of it shall, shall amount. If it's not granted, shall amount to more than a American, mere inconvenience for the applicant. There also, the, these, this folks, the, the clients, my clients, the Leskas are present here this evening, and they would, they would give testimony that they plan on staying in this house for the rest of their days and aging in place. This is something that they would very much allow them to enjoy, enjoy this, this home and this residence, which they've been for, for quite some time. They can attest to how long they've been there, and they, they hope to continue to be there with this, with this nice addition to their home. So with that, if there's any questions for the applicant, they are on the call this evening. Or any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. I thought I muted myself. Excuse me. So thank you very much, Sergio. Board members, do you have any questions? For Sergio?
Yes, I do. Could, could you tell us a little bit about the, what you're saying, the pre-existing foundation that was put in or on the front already? What, what does that look like in, what's, what are the dimensions of that?
The dimensions of the house itself?
But I was reading in the notes, it said something about like, the previous owner put in a, a foundation for a porch, is that correct?
No, I don't believe that was, there wasn't a foundation for this, for a porch put in. No, I don't believe that's the, what it was, but I think the, what I was, what was in the narrative is that this structure was, was built prior to my, my clients and the current owners finishing off the construction. So it's, it's not there. It wasn't there, there, it wasn't prior doing on their part that the structure is actually, it's about 1.9 feet over the setback in the front left corner. If you can see my screen, there's a, there's a minor encroachment that was, that was accepted and, and.
It wasn't, it wasn't built with the intent of putting a front porch on originally, is that what you're saying?
To the best of my knowledge, no, there's just a front stoop with a stairwell and a, and a brick walkway.
Okay.
Like I said, my clients are on the call. They could probably let you know if, if it's content to the contrary, but I don't believe so.
Okay.
And how long have they been owners of the property?
That I don't know, and I should know. Tom, Tom or Jocelyn should be on if they, they could probably tell you how long they've owned it.
1992. We've been owners.
Okay, well, if you guys are gonna, let's get you sworn in if you guys are gonna talk, so go ahead, spell your names.
It's Jocelyn, J-O-S-L-I-N, Leska, L-E-A-S-K-A.
And Thomas Leska.
Okay, and you guys further tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
We do.
Yes, we do.
Excellent. So go ahead. You said since when?
May of 1992.
92.
We took possession of the house.
Okay.
That's all I had.
That's all you have, Mr. Mark. Okay, any other questions from board members of either the applicants or Sergio, the engineer? Nope. Okay. Okay, Sergio, anything you want to add to that, or?
None. I think I've covered everything, unless there's any other questions, I think I'm all set. Thank you.
No, no, very nice. Thank you. And Jessica, is there anyone out there that wants to speak in behalf of this application?
So again, if you wish to speak on your computer, you can hit the raise hand function. You're calling in by phone, star nine will raise hand, star six will mute and unmute. No one has.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Rick Jerzak here. I guess I'd have to ask you to ask Amy if it's appropriate for me to say something as a private citizen.
No, no, sorry, Rick, you, nope, you need.
Okay, I'll shut my mouth. Okay.
Anyone else out there that want to speak on behalf? Okay, board members, any other questions, or does someone want to make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion if nobody else is gonna step forward.
Frozen.
And I'm gonna move approval of the petition of Jocelyn and Thomas Leska of 258 Kettle Pond Drive in South Kingstown for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as described by the chairman at the beginning of the testimony. Sergio Shirenzia spoke on behalf of the petition. He is the principal of Shirenzia's Engineering, and he was the one that prepared. And he was the one that prepared the site plan for the Leskas. What they want to do is they want to put an eight foot by thirty-eight foot covered porch with stairs on the home. It'll be fourteen feet high, covering the, the first story of the building. And they're requesting or they require an eleven foot setback associated with the construction of the porch. Seems like a reasonable construction endeavor to me. And so I will just proceed forward. Indicating that Mr. Shirenzia, Shirenzia mentioned the four findings of fact associated with them. I will repeat those soon as I put my glasses on, so I can read it. The board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. It is not due to a physical or economic disability of the applicant. And this is mainly because the original foundation that was put in there actually encroached upon the front yard setback. And so they're trying to correct that along with the fact that they want to put this porch and stairs in. And they really want to be able to enjoy the front yard of their property, which is now, as I viewed it, simply just some grass there with some bushes and trees as well. And, and most of, I'm sure most of the entertainment and recreation goes on at the back of the house at the present time. And it would be nice to have this structure out front and it goes along with what's in the neighborhood as such. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. They're planning to remain in this house for the rest of their lives. Seems to be like a retirement home as such, and I can completely see that that is a worthwhile endeavor on their part. The board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. It's just fits in with the, with the neighborhood. I'm sure it'll be a lovely addition to the neighborhood as such. The board finds that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary. They need to correct the, the originals setback encroachment that was there as well as they want to add to the the ambiance of, of the front of the house, which is pretty stark right at the moment. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, amounts, will amount to more than a mere inconvenience. Because they're really planning to stay there for quite some time. Having built, bought the house in nineteen ninety-two, it seems like a reasonable thing for them to do. As, as a result, I move approval of this petition.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Is there any other discussion? Here and none, Mr. Rosen.
Hi.
Mr. Daniels.
Hi.
Mr. Charcoik.
Hi.
Mr. Mark.
Hi.
Mr. Cagnetta, I, motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and look at that, his last vote and here I am forgetting that, that, you know.
Oh, yeah, right.
That's, that's so nice of me. Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You, you're welcome. Well, Mr. Mark, thank you very much.
All right. Enjoy the rest of your meeting and maybe I'll see you soon.
There'll be a cake on your stoop.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask something before Mr. Mark runs away? On the, in the, the agenda, the next petition says continuation. Did you hear something on this already? Because I haven't.
No.
No?
No, we didn't hear it.
It's fine. Okay. No problem.
All right, thanks.
A quick bill.
Good luck for you.
Goodbye, goodbye.
Take care.
Bye.
See ya.
Okay, so now Mr. Jurzak is a voting member. Next on the agenda, we do have the continued petition of Simon Wildman of one ninety-one Holly Ridge Road in West Kingston, Rhode Island. Zero two eight nine two for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is proposing to construct a twenty-four by thirty-foot detached garage. The building height of the garage will be twenty-five feet. The maximum height allowed for accessory structure is twenty feet. A relief of five feet is requested. The lot size is fourteen point four five acres. Dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, section four zero one. The schedule of dimensional regulations, section nine zero seven, which is our standards of relief. Owner of the property is Simon and Robin Wildman for the premises located at one ninety-one Holly Ridge Road. Assessor's map twenty-one, lot thirty-nine and is zoned R eighty. And for this, the documents we have for this petition is the application signed and dated December eleventh, twenty twenty. The owner authorization form signed and notarized January fourth, twenty twenty-one. The two hundred foot radius map and a butter's list site plan, construction documents, which there are three pages. We have the legal notice, the proof of the certified mailings and the notarized affidavit and mailings. Photos one through three and correspondences from the continuation request. And then we have correspondence from Stephen Wojcowski of two eleven Holly Ridge Road dotted, dated February fourth, twenty twenty-one. Bill and Edna DeCesar, one seventy-one Holly Ridge Road dated February eighth, twenty twenty-one. And who do we have here tonight for this petition?
Mr. Chairman, good evening, Nate Godfrey. Simon Wildman is on board as well. I have some particular expertise with zoning board matters and reviewed Simon's petition and offered to, to assist, to streamline the process and I am the principal and managing partner of Newport Appraisal Group. I've appeared before you, not recently, but over the last twenty-five years, numerous times and if it would please the board, I'd like to present the, the application for you.
Great. So let's get you sworn in, Mr. Godfrey. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and about, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, and could you please spell your name?
Nate Godfrey, G O D F R E Y. I'm a real estate appraiser. Yep, go ahead.
And Ms. Goins, do we need to get permission from the owner? Or?
The, this is Amy Goins' legal counsel there on here. So if you want to get their permission for the record, you can.
Okay. Mr. Wadman?
Yes.
Okay, could you please state your name?
Simon Wildman, S I M O N, last name W I L D M A N.
And are both you guys gonna speak or just yourself?
I'll, I'll speak.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the whole truth and about, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and you're okay with Mr. Godfrey speaking on your behalf?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Mr. Godfrey. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robin and Simon bring you an application for height relief, five foot of dimensional relief. The property is located at one ninety-one Holly Ridge Road in West Kingston. That is gravel-based, single-lane roadway. It's currently a single family on the dwelling, about fourteen point four five acres, zoned R eighty. Plat map twenty-one, lot thirty-nine. As far as I can tell from my review, it's a dimensionally conforming set of improvements. The lot is dimensionally conforming and the uses exist as a matter of right. So everything is in in order there. You may know Simon locally, his blue O'Connell line van, Simon, the English handyman on the side of it. Robin, recently retiring from a very successful career in the South Kingston Public Schools as a teacher. This is their primary residence. They're only full-time residents. And if it's okay with you, I'll just run through some basic questions for Simon and let him fill in his proposal. I'd like you to note the, the agenda lists this as a twenty-four by thirty detached garage when your ZBR application is for twenty-four by twenty-eight feet, which is the accurate number. It's merely a typo on the meeting agenda and the request is twenty-four feet by twenty-eight feet. So Simon, could you just explain to the board quickly what you'd like to do?
Yeah, I'd like to construct a twenty-four by twenty-eight detached garage. And the overall height is gonna be around twenty-five feet. And as I understand it, twenty is permitted. So I'm seeking five feet of relief.
Very good. And why do you need another five feet of height?
Well, the old van's getting sixteen years now and unfortunately she's rotting out from the, from the bottom up. So I'm coming to eventually change the van. And the new vans are now they come in three different heights and the one I, the one I would like to buy with a roof rack on is it's looking at about eleven feet. So the first floor needs to get raised.
Okay, and your, your level of this garage, what are you planning for that?
Sorry, Nate?
The upper level of the garage, what are you planning for that?
Oh, it's gonna be storage.
Just storage?
Yeah.
Strictly storage, okay. And this relief is, in your opinion, completely necessary?
Yes.
Okay, so Simon, one of the tests is the hardship must be due to a unique characteristic of the subject land or structure. Is there any way you can manage this project without the relief?
Well, no, not really. The going, going below grade isn't an option.
Obvious bloody.
Yes.
Okay, so the, the technology in the van and such require it and you need to be able to stand up in your storage area. Fair enough?
Yes.
Okay, have you, have you done anything previously to cause this hardship?
No.
Okay, so one of the, the things the board requires is that the hardship is not due from your desire primarily greater financial gain. You're a contractor. You've got tools, you've got roof racks, you've got a van. Is it greater financial gain as a result of this hardship or is this strictly to maintain a living?
No, it's just to maintain the standards we're going now.
And you've done nothing to create this, this hardship. Agreed?
No, no, yeah.
Okay, and with regards to your, your neighbors, you've got letters of support from, on file from two neighbors. Could you tell us where those neighbors are in relationship to your property?
Yeah, so Bill, Bill and Eddie DeCesaray, they're on our right-hand side. Been neighbors now for thirty years. I think Jessica has, I, I've emailed everything to her and Steve's on our left, Steve Wojcowski. And neither of our neighbors have any problems with the, the existing five feet. Bill, Bill and Eddie won't even, they can't even see our house, so they're not even gonna see the garage either.
So these are your direct abutting, directly abutting neighbors, is that fair to say?
Yeah, both of them, yeah.
Okay, and from the road, Simon, from standing on, on, on the roadway, looking down your driveway, can you see the house from, from the roadway?
No.
You think you'll be able to see the garage?
No.
Okay, so we get down to the end of this and you can't see it, your neighbors are in tune with it. Up and down Holly Ridge Road, is it fair to say there's, there's plenty of oversized detached structures, barns and so forth?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's consistent with our neighbors and neighbors further down the lane and further up the lane also.
Very good. And last question, Simon, in, in your opinion, is this the least relief necessary for you?
Yes.
Very good. So Mr. Chairman, you, you have a five-step test for your dimensional variance. Simon has given you his understanding of, of the project. The neighbors are, are on board. You won't be able to see it from the street. You know, Simon, I've known Simon for a long time and I know the business he runs. I'm surprised this van's still on the road and look forward to a new one. For him, honestly. So that concludes our presentation. And if you have any questions of either of us, I'm sure we could answer them.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, it's fine out. Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Godfrey or Mr. Wadman? I mean, I could certainly attest as a contractor myself, I, I know that the variety and the sizes of vans have certainly changed over the years from just your normal O'Connell line one fifty. And having a full-size walk-in without hitting your head against every rib on the ceiling is, is an advantage. So I can certainly appreciate the, the, the need to accommodate such a vehicle, so.
Mr. Chairman, if, if we may, I don't know if it's necessary at this point, but could we just ensure that those letters of support are full exhibits?
Absolutely, and we did read them in as, as documents, but but I can certainly read them into the record.
So long as they're part of the full and complete file, that's fine.
Yep, and, and as you stated, the DeCesar said they have no objection. And the folks at two eleven Holly Ridge Road also didn't have an objection. So you seem to have some good neighborhood support, which is important. So is there anyone out in the audience that might have questions of either the applicant or their rep?
No one is raising their hand.
Okay. Board members, comments or, or motions?
I, I just want to have one question.
Sure, Mr. Rosen.
Uh, Mr. Wildman, this is going to be a two-car garage, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Why do you need a two-car garage?
Well, my wife drives as well and one, and so I've got the van and my wife drives the car. Well, we both drive each other, but you know.
Understood. Okay.
It helps also as the weather gets, you know, bad in the winter, y- your, your vehicle needs to go into some kind of garage or structure. You know, just over the winter. I mean, it, it keeps the vehicle a lot better and it saves shoveling the, the car out, you know, before you actually go to work as well. So.
Yeah, well, that's, that's during the winter, of course, when it really gets bad, it seems that a garage, at least for the vehicle that your wife is gonna drive, might be better attached to the, to the building. Is that possible?
Not at this stage, because the foundation's already poured.
I noticed that. You had pictures of it, yes.
Yep.
One other question, the eight-foot storage area.
Yes.
What kinds of thing are you gonna, are you gonna store up there? Do you need eight foot, other than the fact that, well, I don't assume that you're eight feet tall, but
If I was, I'd be playing basketball.
Yeah, so would I and you'd earn a lot of more money, but do you need the full eight foot?
Well, yeah, with, I have a lot of tools for the business. And it, 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 even if it was just, you know, even if it was a smaller space, just actually going into a space where you cannot actually stand up, it becomes a bit of a pain in the butt, to be frank, you know?
Okay.
And that, and that's just the floor, floor print of the garage, what, what's there, you know?
Yeah, you're not planning to make that into a in-law apartment or something.
Have you met my in-laws?
That's not gonna happen. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other questions from board members?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, Rick Jurzak.
Please do.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition, okay, of Simon Wildman, okay, with regard to property located at 191 Holly Ridge Road, West Kingston, Rhode Island, 02892. Okay, Mr. Wildman came before us today. He was also represented by Nate Godfrey. Mr. Wildman specifically authorized Mr. Godfrey to act as his representative, okay? Mr. Godfrey being a real estate appraiser. Mr. Godfrey went through and explained exactly what Mr. Wildman was looking for. All the man is looking to do, okay, is build a garage, okay, and exceed the 20-foot height requirement, okay, by five feet, okay? The garage is 24 by 28 feet, okay? The property is 14.45 acres, so it's a large piece of property, okay? Mr. Godfrey explained the reason to build such a garage and the reason for the additional height, which is necessitated due to Mr. Wildman's occupation, okay? He runs a handyman business, and the vehicle that is necessary for that business is such that he needs the height for the door to get into the garage, all right? Clearly, this is a reasonable request, okay? I see no public purpose for denying this application. I will go through the requirements of Section 907A very quickly, okay? The hardship clearly is due to the nature of Mr. Will Wildman. I'm sorry, I'm screwing up your name, Wildman's business, okay? The 20-foot height is, this does not do it for him, okay? So the hardship is that he needs a little more height on this, all right? It clearly will not impact the general character of the neighborhood. It's a 14.45 acre piece of property, okay? He's asking to raise the garage by a mere five feet, okay? It is clearly the least relief that is necessary, because if he wants to get that van, all right, that he needs for his business, all right? That's the minimum that we can do this. He has taken no prior actions that have caused this hardship, okay? And lastly speaking, okay, not granting the variance will clearly amount to more than a mere convenience to Mr. Wildman, okay? I would like to make reference to and make it part of the motion, his site plan, okay? Which he submitted, okay, it's his own writing, but that's okay, all right? The only comment I would make on that is that the new garage is 28 by 24 and not 30 by 24, all right? There are also three associated pages, Hook Tonight Site Plan, which gives us a feel for what this garage is like, all right? There were two neighbors that sent letters in support of Mr. Wildman's petition, okay? Having all that being said, Mr. Chairman, unless I've missed something, I would ask that the board grant this petition.
Great, Mr. Jurzak, thank you very much. No, I think you got it. Anyone want to make a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Daniels. Any other discussion? Mr. Jurzak?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Charkewick?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good luck.
Could I say one thing?
Chairman, the board.
Could I, I'd like to thank Jessica, because she made this thing very, very easy. Thank you, Jessica. I'll buy you a pint when I can see in the pub.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay. So next, we have the amended petition of Timothy O'Neill of 235 Middlebridge Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, 02879, for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a 12-foot by 16-foot detached shed on the property and also construct a new front exterior stair attached to the dwelling. The proposed location of the shed is 29 feet from the property line, which requires relief as accessory structures are not allowed in the front yard setback. The required front yard setback is 35 feet, relief of six feet is requested. The dwelling front stairs will be located 17.5 feet from the front property line. Relief of 17.5 feet is requested. Lot size is 22 acres. Dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance, Section 401, which is our Schedule of Dimensional Regulations, Schedule 503, Accessory Structures, Section 907, Standards of Relief. Owner of the property is Timothy P. and Kirsten O'Neill for premises located at 235 Middlebridge Road, South Kingston. Assessors map 434, Lot 15, and is zoned R20. For this petition, we have their application signed and dated January 3, 2021. Owner authorization form signed and notarized January 3, 2021. The 200-foot abutters list and radius map. Construction drawings showing existing and proposed stairs by Batova Design. A one-site plan showing stair location. Construction drawings by Sheds Unlimited LLC dated December 4, 2020. A 1.1, a 2.1, a 3, and the site plan. Legal notice, proof of certified mailings and notarized affidavit of mailing. Amended legal notice, proof of certified mailings, notarized affidavit of mailing, and a correspondence from Andrew and Holly McMahon, 7 Lafayette Avenue, received February 12, 2021. Who's here tonight for this petition?
Tim O'Neill.
Mr. O'Neill, could you please state your name?
Timothy O'Neill.
Spell it, spell it, please.
T-I-M-O-T-H-Y-O apostrophe capital N-E-I-L-L.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. So please go ahead and tell us what you'd like to do.
The shed, one of the problems of living down here by the river is that because all of the mechanicals have to be above a certain height for floodplain requirements, it takes away a lot of any storage opportunities. So we need more dry storage, frankly. So that was why we wanted the shed. And then the stairs, the way they're configured now, they double back on themselves. It's really awkward and strange, and most people end up coming up through our garage because the stairs are so unusual. We built the house, but I remember it was a zoning constraint that we ended up building the stairs the way they did, and it just doesn't work.
So the stairs were built to conform already?
I think, yeah, I mean, I honestly don't, it was 15 years ago, I don't remember the I relied on the contractor's guidance, and he said, this is what you gotta do, and I said, sure. And now that we live with it, virtually no one ever uses the stairs because they're so strange.
Right, okay. And so are those stairs gonna end up coming out how much farther than existing?
So basically, they extend down, like halfway down the height that you need, and then there's a landing, and then they double back. So you have to go towards the garage door and then turn around and walk back up the stairs and double back on yourself to get to what is technically our front door? We just want to have it be a straight shot. So it just goes down straight, so when you come to the house, obviously, the front door is the front door.
And how, oh, okay, so you're extending out the landing on the top too, which is then bringing it out a little bit farther?
Yeah, yeah, we just wanted to look, for lack of a better term, normal. It's really weird.
Do you have a door that opens outwards when you're at the top of the stairs?
I don't know.
No, it opens in.
It opens inward.
It opens in, okay. Okay, but the eight feet is gonna give you a little more ability to put things down, get your keys, get in the house.
Exactly, exactly.
And right now, it's a little tight?
Yeah, there's no, you can't carry something up to the door, you have to you can't really hang your arms at your side with a bag.
So this is gonna help you access the house much safer?
Exactly.
More safe, okay. Okay. And the shed itself, is there anything unique about the shed that we need to know, or is it just really its placement that you're asking for?
No, nothing fancy, just because we have all the setback requirements, because there's roads on two sides, we have to get the variance to put the shed in.
So basically, it's the unique shape of your lot that's making it difficult to
Yeah, the lot is very unusual, it's an L-shaped lot. So the property is on one part of the L, and then there's the other part of the L that's got nothing on it, but it's fairly narrow. And because you've got Maple Street on one side, which has a 35-foot setback requirement, and Middlebridge on the other side that has a 35-foot setback requirement, I think you end up with like a six-foot buildable area just because of setback requirements, but it's actually a pretty good-sized lot. And if it were not, if it were a regular property that it abutted, like another house, we wouldn't need a variance, it's just because it's a street.
Okay. And your principal access is on the Middlebridge side?
Correct.
Okay. Board members, any more questions for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Tom Daniels, I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
In looking at that neighborhood, I didn't find any sheds in a front yard anywhere around Middlebridge Road that I could see. And I'm wondering why that shed couldn't be moved to the southeast or southerly corner? It seems to me there's room to the south side, right on the corner, up against the coastal buffer or close to the coastal buffer, which would be in more keeping with the neighborhood. Is there any reason why you can't do that?
I'm sure, well, I'd have to get variances, that's a paper road, and I'd have to get variances for all that as well. There's just no room there, it's very, it's quite, it's pretty tight.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about, you have a neighbor there, it's not, there's no paper road, there's a driveway there. To the, if I look at your property to the right rear, right rear of the structure of the house.
Yeah.
Right there, in the corner.
Yeah.
It's in the same
Any reason it can't be moved there?
There's, maybe I'm not understanding what you're saying. So if I'm facing the house from Middlebridge Road, the area to the left of the house?
No, to the right.
Oh, yeah, there's not enough room there. It's pretty tight.
Oh, how tight? Because it looked to me like there's room there.
I think we're talking, he's looking at the spot where we're proposing.
No, he's looking to the, he's looking over here, by Leo and Alice's house.
It's the same plane, they're both
It says, that's not Grant, you're looking between Grant Avenue and the house, correct?
No, I don't think that's an avenue, I thought it was a driveway, it looked like to me next to you.
No, I see, I have a paper road. That's one of the other issues, is there's a paper road with Grant Avenue?
Okay, what I'm talking about is
That helps.
Move the cursor left, right there.
Yeah, that's
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, so that's a paper road to the right, so keep going, that's, keep going left, see, that's a paper road right there.
So between the dwelling and that road, you don't have any space to put the shed?
No, it's tight.
Do you know the dimension?
Like 12 feet.
Yeah, probably 20 feet at most, 25, maybe.
It says 15.5 feet, right there?
Tight.
And it's the same plane, it's still the front yard.
How about a smaller shed? Is any reason you can't go with a smaller shed?
Yeah, it wouldn't really meet our needs, I mean, I'm hoping to put some, you know, motorcycles and stuff in there, that's one of my goals, so no.
Well, I understand the uniqueness of the lot, my issue is with with it in the front. I just don't, I don't see that's in keeping with the neighborhood.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of sheds around town for similar reasons. The lots are really strange down here, they're small, they're configured long before anybody planned anything.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other board members' questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just one question, Mr. Chairman, Rick Jurzak here.
Yes, sir.
What's the distance between the proposed shed and the existing house in the back? Okay, how far is that? I guess the house in the back, existing house, is on Maple Street, I'm not sure what in other words, in the back of the shed, what, there's a house back there, is there not, a neighbor? How far, how far from the back of your proposed shed to their house?
Well, from the property line, it's 11 feet, and then I think it's, if I had to guesstimate, it's probably another 10 or 15 feet from there, 10 feet, let's say. So 20 feet at least, 25.
Okay.
There's a fence too, between us.
Why, excuse me again, Mr. Jurzak here. You know, I'm just looking at this thing, and maybe I'm misconstruing what I'm seeing. But why can't the shed just be moved to the right?
Towards Maple Street?
No, the other way. Because we're trying to get away from Maple Street, are we not?
I mean, I don't
What do we, aren't we trying to get a
Part of our house. It's all along the same plane.
My wife is trying to communicate something to me, and I'm not sure what she means.
Maple, Maples, it's all
There's a drawing we're looking at.
Okay, well, it's all directly along Middlebridge Road, it's on the same exact parallel.
Yeah, when you say front yard, you're saying it's not a front yard, it's even with the house, almost.
And if we moved it over there, it's still exactly in the front yard, if he's calling it that.
I know what she's saying, you're only moving it left or right, you're not yeah, we, yeah, we could move it closer, I guess. But I think the size of the shed that we wanted would have to be constrained.
No, I guess this is a question for our zoning officer. Are we, is it the front yard to Maple Street we're talking about here, or is it the front yard to Middlebridge?
Middlebridge.
Two. Yep, I could speak to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Middlebridge is considered the front, Maple, the corner side, and then there is a paper road which is south of the dwelling, which is also a corner side. So Middlebridge would be the front, corner side, Maple, and then it's like a U shape, pretty much.
What is, in the proposed, in the proposed map, what's the distance between the proposed shed and Middlebridge?
I'd have to, I couldn't tell you, I can find out.
Well, it's on the drawing.
Is it 20?
He wants to know from here to here. He wants to know from the shed to Middlebridge.
That's 29 feet.
What's 20?
29 feet.
Is that what you're saying, it's 29 feet?
Believe so, yeah.
29.0514.
Okay, all right. All right, so that is, so you're saying that is the the front yard that we're trying to get the variance on, that front yard?
Correct. Like, it's an odd front yard, it's a very oddly shaped lot. If you saw the lot, it looks like a vacant lot, and it actually looks like it belongs to my neighbor.
Okay. All right, I see it. All right, thank you.
One more question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Daniels.
Mr. O'Neill. What about the rear inside the coastal buffer, what would you have to do to put it back there?
I don't know, I'm not even supposed to mow it.
Or put grass
Yeah, I can't do anything there, that is verboten. That is, as one of the CRMC officers told me one day, he said, oh, congratulations, you live on the most heavily regulated piece of property in the state. So there's no, yeah, you can't do coastal, doesn't let you do anything. So, there's no, uh, yeah, you can't do coastal, doesn't let you do anything.
Okay. Any other questions, uh, board members for the applicant?
Yeah, I have one question, uh, Mr. Rosen here.
Yes, sir.
You're proposing to put the shed where that boat is sitting right now?
Uh, no, uh, south of that.
South of that, so where is the boat sitting right now?
The boat is sitting right on the edge of Maple, and right where the sixty forty-six is on the drawing.
Okay. So the six feet of relief is from Middlebridge to the shed, the front of the shed, right?
Correct. Because there's a thirty-five setback, and there's twenty-nine feet.
And the setback from the shed to Maple Street is twenty-five feet, is that what I'm reading?
Correct.
Okay. I'm agreeing with Mr. Daniels, and the fact, it bothers me that, uh, this is gonna go in the front yard, but I, I've been out there a couple of times, and it really is an unusual lot. Um, when you're talking about a paper road in the back, right there.
Yep.
That, is that next to Lafayette?
No, there's a little bit of.
Where's Lafayette and, and, and the neighbor that's supporting you?
Around the corner.
Around which corner?
So if you were coming over, uh, well, if you took, took Middlebridge Road and, and kept heading south, it turns sharply to the left?
Yeah, I pulled in there.
So they're in my radius of two hundred feet because of the turn. You know what I mean, like, they're not, uh, so the, the, it brings them into the radius because they're over down by the fifteen in the lower corner, but further south of that.
Oh, really, that far away, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, one, one last question, Rick Jurzak.
Yes, sir.
And again, I'm, 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 my eyesight is not that great at the moment, but the, uh, on the, sir, uh, on the easterly side, okay, where, in other words, the back of the shed, what's the distance from where you're proposing putting the shed to the property line?
Eleven foot.
Eleven feet, and what, and what is the, uh, what's required for the zoning ordinance?
That would be ten feet.
Ten, ten feet?
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, I guess my question for, uh, Mr. Daniels and also, uh, uh, the board in general is that would it be less offensive to give these, this gentleman, uh, a variance from that property line in the back? Requirement, and therefore, then he wouldn't be in the front yard?
I just wanna, but I, I, I understand the question, I think it's important that the zoning board have debate, I just wanna make sure you're all aware. If the shed is going to, if the proposed, I'm sorry, um, if the proposal is going to change at all, it would likely require re-advertising.
Okay. All right, I, I, again, I, I'm not, I, I, I understand, uh, uh, Mr. Daniel's thoughts and, uh, on this thing, but I, I really don't have a major problem with it. Okay, in any event, so be it.
Gonna be a nice shed, it won't be an isolate.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Truckwick.
So, Mr. O'Neill, just, just making sure I understand, if the back of this shed is gonna be, you said eleven feet from, from the property line, but is the fence on the property line, do you know?
Uh, it, it's inside my property line, yeah.
So, so how much room to the fence, is that roughly eleven feet?
Yeah, it's roughly eleven feet, to ten, I mean, whatever the width of the fence is, it's right on.
So if you were to go back, so if you were to go back, you know, ten feet and bring in a foot off the fence, that you wouldn't need the setback on the front, would, is there a reason why you wanted to keep it that far off the fence?
Aesthetics. It, it would look, it would look odd. I think it would look worse if you moved it towards the guy's house, frankly. But, that's.
That's all I, just, I want to understand the rationale behind that.
Kind of have to see the lot to understand it, you'd be like, oh yeah, it makes sense, it goes right there, it's, it's.
Yeah, it is a very weird shape.
Yeah.
Yes. Any other questions, board members of the applicant? Okay, uh, Jessica, is there anyone out there that wants to speak behalf?
You're on mute, Jessica.
Thank you. If anyone's calling in by phone, star nine will raise your hand, star six will mute and unmute. If you're on a computer, use the raise hand function. And no one has.
Uh, we did, uh, as the applicant mentioned, and we did receive on February twelfth, uh, a letter from Andrew McMahon, who is saying that residents, they live near Tim and Kirsten O'Neill, Seven Lafayette of South Kingston, and they have no objection to the variance proposed. We're sending this email in the event we cannot attend on Wednesday, February seventeenth, um, and it's signed Andrew and Holly McMahon.
Mr. Chairman, Rick Jurzak, can I just ask, where, where does that person live that sent that letter? You can, in, just so we know where, is, is that, that's not the guy writing back, is it?
No, that's, no, Lafayette, he lives, Andy lives on Lafayette, he's, uh, he's involved in my boat, and one of the things, yeah, he's, that's where the cushions, that's where the cushions, the shed is where the cushions for the boat are gonna go.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other thoughts, uh, or anything you want to add, uh, to this, um, Mr. O'Neill?
No, I just hope that, uh, the board will approve it, and I, I, I'll do right by the town, I'm conscious of the concerns, and I think that when it's done, you'll, it'll, it'll, it's gonna be lovely, it's gonna be a nice piece, and, and we'll really enjoy it.
Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts or, or want to make a, a motion on this petition?
Uh, I, I, I will not make a motion. But I understand the uniqueness of the lot, it is unique, there's no question about it, but the thing I'm troubled with, um, is that it's unusual to have a shed in a front yard in that community, I drove the street up and down, I couldn't find one. And I think we had the ordinance for a reason. Um, I don't think it is, uh, necessarily compatible with the area. But, um, it is unique, and, um, I can support someone else's motion, but I will not make the motion.
Okay, that's fair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Jurzak.
Yeah. I, I will make a motion.
Okay, great, thank you, sir.
All right, uh, I make a motion to approve the petition, okay, of Timothy O'Neill with regard to two thirty-five Middlebridge Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, oh two eight seven nine, okay? This is for a dimensional variance, okay? Mr. O'Neill appeared before us today, all right, and, uh, told us what he wants to do, I guess I'll start with the, what I consider to be the easy thing, okay? He first wants to remove a set of stairs which are in the, I guess you consider it to be one of the two fronts of property, that being facing Middlebridge Road, all right? The present set of stairs is kind of a switchback arrangement, and from what Mr. O'Neill testified to, uh, not only are they awkward, but they seem to be dangerous as well. And, uh, replacing them, uh, would, would make it so that they were, uh, less dangerous, okay? Unless the, uh, prone to someone falling down, all right? He is asking for, there is a thirty-five foot front yard setback requirement, I, oh, wait a second, yeah, yeah. I think so, thirty-five foot setback requirement, he's asking, uh, for a variance of seventeen and a half feet, so he can remove the present stairs and make them a straight shot, uh, up to the, uh, the house, okay? And you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna very quickly just do the whole, the whole thing with, with, uh, uh, dimensional variances on that one, and then I'll move on to the shed, the hardship clearly is that, uh, this is a safety concern, all right? Uh, and due to the, uh, the nature of the lot itself, and the shape of the lot, and where the house is existing, and where they have to put the house, even though they built the house, all right, due to the shape of the lot and the various setbacks, okay? Uh, there clearly is a hardship, okay? There is no real prior action on his part, he is, uh, for that matter, uh, they tried, uh, the less safe stairs, and now they're trying to make them safer, okay? Uh, I certainly do not think that the stairs will alter, uh, the general character of the neighborhood. If anything, they will improve the general character of the neighborhood because they are less awkward-looking. It is the least relief necessary if you want a straight shot into the house, okay? And not granting the variance will clearly amount to more than a mere inconvenience, because he will be, uh, Mr. O'Neill will be, uh, left with an unsafe condition, okay? Now, with regard to the shed, Mr. O'Neill has, has shown us, okay, uh, that we have a very difficult lot to work with here, okay? Due to its very nature and its shape, and also due to the number of, of streets involved here, both paper roads and, and, uh, asphalt roads, all right? And what he's looking to do basically is, is put a shed, a twelve by sixteen shed, which is not an outrageously large-sized shed. I mean, I, it, that's kind of, I would, I would think to be a normal-sized shed, he's not asking for a thirty-five-foot shed here, all right? Uh, he wants to put that uh, in the front yard setback from Middlebridge Road. Uh, and as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, that setback requirement is thirty-five feet, all right? Uh, the shed that he's proposing to put in will be twenty-nine point oh five one four, okay? From Middlebridge Road, so therefore, okay, he needs approximately six feet, we'll say six feet, uh, of relief here, all right? With, now that shed by, also will be located twenty-five feet from Maple Street and eleven feet from the easterly property line, okay? Uh, now, again, Mr. O'Neill has come to us today, and he's explained, the hardship, again, is due to the clear nature of this property, not only, uh, due to its, its general configuration, but also due to the requirements with regard to, uh, the coastal zoning, uh, due to, uh, the coastal features here, all right, and also do the requirements that he has, basically three roads that he has to worry about, all right? Clearly, there's been no prior action on this man's part, okay, to, to cause this hardship, all right? There is some argument that it may alter the character, the general character of the neighborhood, but it's a shed, I don't think it's an outrageous shed. Uh, Mr. O'Neill has, has certified to us and stated that it's gonna be a very nice shed, all right? And we're gonna hold you to that, Mr. O'Neill. Is the least relief necessary in order for this, uh, man to build a reasonably-sized shed? And by not granting it, all right, uh, again, it will clearly amount to more than a mere inconvenience, because he will, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure he can put a shed anywhere else, okay, if, if we don't allow him to do it there, all right? So pursuant to section nine oh seven A, okay? Uh, I would ask that this variance be granted, uh, one last thing, uh, I want to make, uh, reference and, and attach to my motion, his site plan, okay, which shows exactly what he wants to do, um, it, I'm not sure it's labeled, but there are, uh, there's, there are two site plans in the, uh, application, amended to the application, as well as some design of the shed amended to the application, and I would ask that all of those, okay, uh, be part of my motion, okay? Uh, again, I would state that I don't see any public purpose for not granting of this motion, and I think Mr. O'Neill has come to us and satisfied section nine oh seven A of our ordinance, okay? With that, Mr. Chairman, I will stop talking.
Thank you, Mr. Jurzak, uh, is there a second?
A second.
The second, Mr. Chuckwick, uh, any other discussion, anything to add? Nope, uh, Mr. Jurzak?
Hi.
Mr. Chuckwick?
Hi.
Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Cagnetta, I, motion passes, good luck.
Thank you, everyone, much appreciated.
You're welcome. Okay. Next up, we have the petition of, uh, David Barnes Incorporated of four fifty-six Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, zero two eight seven nine, for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to amend their existing special use permit for the expansion of their liquor service area. The proposed exterior liquor service area will be located in the rear of the building and will be approximately eight thousand square feet in area. The service area has been temporarily authorized due to COVID nineteen restrictions. Lot size is point seven acres, special use permit is required per zoning ordinance section nine zero seven, our standards of relief. Owner is four fifty-six Main Street LLC, or premises located at four fifty-six Main Street, South Kingston. Assesses map fifty-six dash three, lot twenty, and is zoned CD, which is commercial downtown. The use code is fifty-six point one, which is a restaurant with alcohol. And for this application, we have the application with the cover letter and exhibit A, signed and dated January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Owner authorization form signed and notarized January eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. The two-hundred-foot radius map and a butters list, vision appraisal, field card, uh, map fifty-six dash three, lot twenty, four pages, uh, temporary service expand, expansion plan, dated May first, twenty twenty. And the legal notice, uh, proof of certified mailing and notarized affidavit of mailing. Um, and who is here for the petition of David Barnes?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant. I, I thought it was appropriate that, uh, would be hearing the Muse Tavern on, uh, St. Patrick's Day Eve. I, I had, I had told many people I was actually gonna do it from the bar, and, uh, but I decided against it.
Well, you know, it'd be hard to mute everyone, so I'm glad you chose that, and if you didn't bring it enough for all of us, then you can't. Uh, but please, tell us what you'd like to do.
Sure, so the applicant leases property of four fifty-six Main Street, uh, it's designated as tax assesses plan fifty-six dash three, lot twenty. Um, and it's owned by four fifty-six Main Street LLC. It's twenty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-two square feet in size, and it's in the commercial downtown zoning district. There's an existing building on the property, which of course contains the Muse Restaurant. Uh, the, the applicant also leases the adjacent property of four forty-six Main Street for parking for the restaurant. Uh, when indoor dining was shut down due to COVID nineteen, the town granted emergency approval for many restaurants to stay open uh, by expanding liquor service to outdoor dining areas that did not previously exist. Uh, the applicant was given approval for outdoor liquor service in their existing rear parking area. That area included a ten and twenty-five one-person, uh, four-person tables in what was previously seventeen parking spaces. Uh, they started the outdoor service in June, and it's permitted, I believe, until the end of this year. Um, and even though the outdoor dining was due to the pandemic, it actually attracted, um, customers to Muse on summer days when their business drops quite a bit. Um, and due to the, uh, that success during the summer, the applicant wanted to request approvals to maintain that area as an outdoor dining area with liquor service. Uh, the use of the restaurant with liquor service permitted by special use permit, which the applicant previously received. Uh, we here tonight requesting a special use permit to amend the previously granted special use permit to expand the liquor service area. The request doesn't require any dimensional relief, and even though the parking is being reduced and the capacity increased, they still, uh, meet the parking requirements. Um, if the relief is granted, then the applicant would move forward to the town council for, uh, approval of the liquor, uh, expansion of the liquor service area, and, uh, And as this board may know, the the liquor licenses are renewed yearly. So that gives them an opportunity on an annual basis if there are any issues. Though they've been open for a while now and there haven't been any issues. So Dan Rubino is one of the owners. And he's gonna testify regarding the proposed use, why they're requesting it and how it's been managed since June. And he'll also explain the amount of parking that's required and how much will be provided. So if I could have Dan sworn in, please?
Sure. Mr. Rubino, could you please spell your name? State and spell your name. Oh, you're on, you're on mute, or is that you, Jessica, is that him?
How's that?
Ah, perfect.
Wow, thank you. Yes, my name is Daniel Rubino, it's D A N I E L, and it's R U B I N O.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Excellent, so go ahead, Mr. Kenyon.
So Dan, where are you employed?
I'm employed at the Muse Tavern.
And what are your duties there?
Mostly, I'm head janitor, but on other days, I own the place, so. All this, all decisions are ultimately run through me and my other business partner, Dave.
And how long have you been involved with the Muse?
Since nineteen ninety.
And you were here tonight representing the applicant, David Barnes Development, Inc.?
Yes, I am.
And I'm sure many of the board members are familiar with the Muse, but can you briefly explain your operation there?
Sure, we're just a local restaurant with, you know, pub food. And we also feature sixty-nine beers on tap. And like I said, we've been around since nineteen ninety-one. And kind of a staple of the community for quite a few years.
And what is the capacity of the existing restaurant?
Existing is three hundred and twenty-nine.
And what are the hours for the existing restaurant?
From eleven AM to one AM.
And have you had special events with outdoor dining and drinking previously?
Yes.
And approximately, how many of those have you had since you began operations?
We have two every year, with the exception of last year due to COVID. So we have two every year and that's been since, almost since we opened.
And were those allowed by the town with a special events permit?
Yes, yeah, and the two events, we do a canoe race from the Ocean Mist to the Muse and we also do a road race.
And approximately, how many people would attend those special events?
Last canoe race was about eight hundred people and our road race was over two thousand at its at its peak last year, the last time we did it was about fifteen hundred.
And over the years, have there been any issues with those events?
Other than a couple broken toes or minor things like that, no, everything.
And at this time last year, was the restaurant shut down due to COVID nineteen restrictions?
Yes, it was.
And that, at that time, did you have any full-time outdoor dining?
At this time last year?
Yes.
No, we didn't.
And did the town grant emergency permission for outdoor dining with alcohol service in a portion of your rear parking lot?
They did.
And did you implement that outdoor dining?
Yes, we did.
And when did that begin?
I believe that was June first.
And did you submit a map with this application showing the location of the outdoor dining?
Yes.
And is that the same map that was submitted with the town council for the emergency permission?
That's correct.
And can you explain to the board where on the property it's proposed to be located?
So if you, if you're going down the Muse driveway, just to the right-hand side of the parking lot, we took, we just basically cut the parking lot behind the Muse, cut it in half, the full length of the parking lot.
And what was probably previously in this location?
Just parking spaces.
And did you reconfigure the drive aisles and parking at the rear of the building?
Yes.
And what did you do exactly with that?
So we ended up making our driveway that, you know, comes right down the side of the Muse. That is now a one-way. And you keep going to the back of the lot and then it circles around and it goes back up the other drive. If you exit, it goes back up the other driveway by manic training and the glass station. So now it's just one way.
And how's that been working out?
It ac- it actually works out better, we still have it set up that way now.
Yeah, I I always thought that that should probably be one way coming, coming in the way you have it now. And how many tables did you have in the the outdoor area?
We actually had thirty tables last year.
And was that four seats per table?
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
And did you install a tent?
We did.
And was everything that was put there movable?
Yes.
And how long did you operate in that area?
It was from June first and I think we finally ended it in November fifteenth.
And were there any issues that you were aware of?
There, there were no issues that I know of.
And did your customers indicate that they, whether they enjoyed being outside in that location?
Yes, and it was, it was received very well, especially for daytime.
And what was the impact on your business?
Well, last year it kept us alive. We would have been, we would have, I think drowned without it. But I think going forward, it'll give us a chance to have daytime business because usually in the summertime, everybody wants to get close to the, you know, the water, beach, whatever. And we're, we're pretty lonely during the day in the summertime.
And are you here tonight requesting to amend your previous special use permit to permit liquor service area in order to make that area a full-time part of your liquor service area?
Yes, I am.
And what are the hours you'd be proposing to use this area?
We'd like to do from eleven AM to eleven PM.
And what time of year would you be proposing it?
It would start May first and we'd end right around November fifteenth.
And would you be proposing any live music outside?
No.
And what are you proposing for the capacity of this area?
It, roughly, it wouldn't be more than a hundred people because we never fill up the tables. So I would say roughly a hundred people.
And would that provide for maximum capacity of like three hundred and twenty-nine people for inside and outside? I mean, it's four hundred and twenty-nine.
Correct.
Total capacity.
It would be, yeah, it'd probably be more like three forty-nine if, if, if you did, if you did four people per table, it'd be a hundred and twenty people. But we, we very rarely, we never actually do that many people per table, so it'd probably be about a hundred.
So it'd be between four twenty-nine and four forty-nine?
Yep.
On top, okay. And per the zoning ordinance, would that require seventy-six parking spaces?
That's correct.
And how many spaces are you proposing on the lot and the adjacent lot?
We'd, we'd have a hundred and twenty-two.
And do you have additional law site parking?
Yes, I also own the building across the street, which we, we use and it's got thirty-one spots. Parking space is there.
And do you have additional law site parking for employees?
And yes, employees, I have a deal with the building behind four fifty-seven with Eric Bell. Then we, that's where I park all my employees.
And so even with the reduction in parking and the increased capacity, do you still meet the parking requirements?
Correct.
And is that true even without the, the lot, two lots across the street?
Yes, but not including the two lots across the street.
And do you require any dimensional relief?
No.
And what type of lighting are you proposing outside?
We just do like LED string lights.
Okay, and does that have any impact on the neighboring properties?
No, not at all.
And will your expansion require any additional signs?
Any additional signage?
Yes.
Not really.
And do you have the necessary utilities for the proposed expansion?
Yes.
And will the proposed expansion impact your waste management, garbage pickup?
No, we, we, no.
And has there been any issues with the existing service in that area since it was put into place?
No, not at all.
And do you foresee any issues with negative impacts on the surrounding property with the proposed expand?
No, I don't. And in fact, you know, the one neighbor that I did talk to before we even set up last year, he said it was an improvement because the tent actually is between, it, it blocked all the, it's like a buffer zone for noise and headlights from cars that would park up against that stone wall, which is right against, you know, right close to his apartment. So, you know, last time I talked to him in the summer, he said it was actually better this way. It was quieter and he didn't have headlights in his, in his windows all the time.
Great, thank you. Did you have anything else you wanted to tell the board?
No, I am good, I'm ready for any questions.
Thank you, I have, I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kenyon, thank you, Mr. Rubino. I just have a question in terms of emergency egress. Will they still be able to access the backside of the building? You know, where the stairs are, where they need to get in that area for any, any emergency vehicles?
Yes, there's, there's about, there's at least twenty, twenty to twenty-five feet where, from where the tent starts to where the back of the building is.
Okay, so there's sufficient space for them to get in there if they needed?
Yes, no problem.
Okay. Board members, any other questions for?
Yes, I have, I have a couple of questions, Tom Daniels. Mr. Rubino, is, is there any anticipated change in what you're doing here from what already existed last summer?
Uh, no, not at all.
Okay. Second question I have, I, it might be for, for Attorney Kenyon. The testimony from your client was that he intends to serve open service between May one and November fifteenth. So is this, is this a temporary permit for, for those dates? Because it's, it's, it's open-ended, it's not specified.
We are fine with a condition, if the board wanted to put a condition on that, that's limited to those dates.
All right, and then another question I have, and I think it goes to our legal counsel. Would that mean that in the future, say, two summers from now, would they need to come back for another temporary permit for those dates or for the, that timeframe?
So this is Amy Goins. If you grant a special use permit, it's permanent and not temporary unless you specify otherwise. One of the conditions can be that it's only valid, you know, seasonally or whatever hours or date range you think is appropriate. Does that answer the question?
So if we, okay, so if we grant the special use permit between May one and November fifteen, that's between those dates forever?
Unless you deem it appropriate to specify, you know, an expiration date, right? Sometimes we do probationary special use permits, like the special use permits that we grant. The ordinance specifies for occupancy by more than three unrelated persons. Those are all, I want to say, valid for, I can't recall off the top of my head if it's two years or. And then the applicant has to come back for renewal. Sometimes we've done that with other uses. But unless you, you know, unless the board approves it that way specifically, it would be like any other special use permit, right? Runs with the land and is permanently in place. I do want to provide the board just a little context. There is legislation that was recently introduced last week, in fact, by Representative Hagan McEntee, who I know you're all familiar with. The legislation would bar municipalities from enforcing any zoning requirements or ordinances that would penalize restaurants or bars for any modifications or alterations to their premises that were made because of COVID relators, related orders or guidance. And the legislation as drafted would be effective during the declared state of emergency and for one year after it ends. There are some additional provisions in the legislation. But I just want to make you aware of that context. I think it's highly likely that it will be adopted in some form this year. So I just want to make you aware of that context. If the legislation, yeah, I mean, if you grant the special use permit, it's kind of a moot point. But, but even if not, I, I want you all to be aware of that legislation and I'll advise you if it's enacted.
Okay, thank you. Back to Mr. Rubino, what, what is your long-term goal here? To, to continue to operate this outside area?
Yes, we would like to operate it for as long as we own it. It was definitely a benefit for us and for staff. It was, you know, we were able to employ an extra three people during the day, more than that actually, because of kitchen help and stuff. But it was definitely a boost to our business for daytime where we needed it most. Like I said, we were kind of lonely in the summertime on those nice days. If it rains, a little different story, but on those nice sunny days, we're, it's just, there's not a lot of people in town and it just gave us the ability to sort of, you know, get some people in the house and do some, do some business.
Do you have any anticipation of going to a more permanent structure?
I don't believe so, mostly because of the way our winters are. You know, with snow plowing and things like that, so I, I, I don't anticipate that at all.
All right. I guess the last question I would have is for Attorney Kenyon. Does this require an amended license from the council?
Mr. Daniels, it does. So af- if this is granted, we then go to the town council and, and you question whether the license can be renewed. They, they have the ability to renew it every year. So if there are issues down the road, then they can, you know, they can take back the ability to, to serve outside.
Can you live with May to November or do you have some other thoughts that you want to argue?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking the attorney.
I'm sorry.
Well, we, we, we had suggested May first to, to November fifteenth. Danny, do you have an issue with that being a condition of approval?
If I could, I would maybe just stretch it to December first, only because we got those really, that crazy warm pat, stretch there in November last year. And I know in my notes, they said, oh, next year, keep it open to December first. Just because we got, we had about two weeks of really, you know, summer, Indian summer. But if, you know, if council doesn't feel comfortable with that, I'm fine. But, you know, as you get further into the season, you know, there is just, people have their windows and doors closed and it just, you know, it becomes a less of an issue.
That, that's all I have at this moment.
Mr. Chairman, Rick Jerzak, I have a couple of questions, it's okay?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, okay. John, I, I, I missed when you told, you said what the hours of operation were suggested.
It's eleven AM to eleven PM.
Eleven to eleven PM, okay. Also, I, I, I didn't quite hear when we were talking about music. I, did you say there's no live music or no music?
There's no live outdoor music.
How about, how about recorded outdoor music?
Danny, what do you have, what did you have out there this summer?
We, we did have music every day, but it was background music. It's never loud enough where it's not, we don't even play it loud enough where people don't have to raise, you know. I make sure that people don't have to raise their voice to be heard, you know, to talk to the people they're with. So, and we have background music playing all the time. So, and it, I, I didn't get any complaints at all. And I can tell you, they just, we never play the music loud. It's not, I'm not looking at having nightclub.
What, what's the closest residential unit?
There is the one, there's apartment that is, that abuts our property. That's, it's owned by Greg Sweet, but I believe there's four units there. And they're probably it roughly sixty feet away from where the edge of the tent is.
Okay, all right. Do you intend to take, did you take the tent down this year or is the tent still up?
No, we took it down.
You took it down, all right. Just a question, just for, for everybody's clarification, if this is granted, is there no necessity to include the washing sta- station area and the porta potty area? Is that not a function of serving liquor outside? I, I, I'm, I'm only questioning this, I'm not, certainly not. I, I, I'm, I'm only questioning this. I'm not, certainly not an expert on this. But you've got, I've been to that property, and by the way, I think it's a terrific use, but, but it, uh, or, or. As you know, your washing station area and the porta potties are outside of the delineated area. Okay, I'm, I throw that up as, as a question. Uh, news line music, fast me. Oh, one last question for you, Mr. Kenyon. Okay, in that. I, I guess with COVID, everything has changed, but, uh, the, the prior, uh, sub special use permit allowed for just indoor liquor. I'm assuming, okay? So that the operation last year outdoors was not pursuant to any special use permit. It was just pursuant to this emergency legislation. Is that the case?
That, that's correct. I, um, I'm not exactly, Amy might be able to correct me, but the town council. Enacted some emergency, uh, orders that permitted. Restaurant owners to submit a plan and, and then they kind of approved everything all at once without getting the special use permit.
Right, this is, this is Amy. The council enacted an ordinance. Authorizing temporary expansions of restaurants, and that was back in June twenty twenty. Originally, it was going to expire, um, in December and then back in November twenty twenty. They, uh, changed the expiration date to March thirty-first. Um, I think they've just recently scheduled a public hearing to extend it again further and because of the legislation. We've recommended they, that they extend it until at least July thirty-first. So, I just want to make everyone aware that, um, this, the, the current condition is legal. Under that ordinance.
Okay, one last question and I'll stop talking. Uh, how, how do you propose, you know, whenever you have liquor involved? Uh, a concern of mine is always, and how do you, how do you delineate the liquor area from the lawn liquor area for. For, uh, young people and, and also for automobiles and, uh, my only concern would be, uh. How do we do that? How do we make sure people aren't getting a beer and sitting in the car? And, and parking lot or, uh, anything to that effect. What do you, uh, as I remember going there, the, the number of times that I attend. I went there last year and, and had a beer and, and had a sandwich. Uh, it was, it was kind of open, was it not? I mean, you came in around where that, that reception area was and then you went in. And you had tables set up. Are you going to have some type of barrier, some type, something that you'd show? Where this eight hundred square feet is and where, if I want to get a beer, can I go wander over to my car with it?
Well, we had, we had all those big cement blocks that were set up down the center of the parking lot to delineate, you know, and it was more so to keep. People safe from any cars, you know, possibly hitting them. So, but there's no way, like, if, if you have, you have to. If you don't look old enough, we card everybody.
Okay.
So.
I'm sure, I'm sure you do.
Yep, so you have to be of age to get, get a drink, a beverage anyway.
Yeah. It's. But even, but even if I'm, I'm carded, I'm a twenty-two-year-old guy and I've had my, I've had four or five beers and I want to go sit in my Corvette and drink a beer.
We, we don't let, we don't let anybody walk, like, we don't, we don't let them walk outside the building, we don't let them walk outside the boundaries there with an open beverages, like, we. We just don't permit it.
Yeah, who stops them from doing that in this eight hundred square foot area?
Uh, that would be any, any of the staff or managers and I, you know, everybody's aware of what. Our responsibilities are and, you know, the staff, we put a lot of responsibility on the staff as well. They, they enjoyed. The benefits of it as well, so I think it's, it's policed, you know, by our entire staff, because no, it's, it's a good thing and nobody wants to see it go away.
Okay, no more questions for me, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, board members, any other questions for the applicant or the attorney?
Yeah, I have, uh, one question. This is, uh, Bill Rosen. Uh, Mr. Rubino, um. It, is the indoor space open right now for, for, uh, liquor and serving of sandwiches and food and stuff?
Yes, it is.
And. You serve, uh, and cho, children and, uh, underage people go into that indoor facility?
They go in, but they don't get, if they're underage, they don't get.
Can't be served, that's correct, yes. Okay. And so you're, you, you're proposing that this, uh, this outdoor facility is going to hopefully open May first, correct?
Weather permitting and with your permission.
Okay. I think that's all the clarification I need. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Uh, board members, any other questions? No? Okay, uh, Attorney Kenyon, is there anything else you wanted to, uh, anyone else you wanted to bring forward or any other questions?
No, I, I did want to address, uh, Mr. Jurzak's question about the, the wash station and the, and then bathrooms.
Oh, please, yeah.
So, th- those areas are outside of the liquor service area, so you wouldn't be able to bring drinks over there. But we don't need relief for it because it, it's just permitted. We're asking for the liquor service area expansion. So, it, even though it, it's shown, they're shown on the plan, they're not a part of that expansion.
And Mr. Kenyon, we're, I'm sorry, w- we're being specific in to say that, that, uh, this is only for a tent. Um, a, a seasonal tent. Um, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't have any, any jurisdiction over the hardscaping if that were to change to dirt. Or if there are trees planted, anything like that, but, um, this is really just meant as, uh, an area where a tent will be erected. Um, and, and for all intents and purposes, it's defined as a tent and. Right?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Jurzak, you had a question?
Yeah, uh, is it, uh, Mr. Kenyon with, I know, I don't, I don't want to concentrate on these. Porta potties, but is, are the porta potties in the washing states, is that, that's okay zoning wise? There's no problem with that, without any. You can, you can have permanent porta potties and washing statements in the parking lot?
I, I, I believe so. I mean, uh, the, the use of a restaurant is permitted by right there, so. The, the relief tonight is just on the liquor service area.
Okay.
Which is the, the area that we delineated.
Rick, this is Amy. That may be more of a health code or building code issue.
All right, and one last comment to Mr. Cagnetta. I don't think that the tent is going to cover the whole. Eight thousand square feet. The tent now is, or last summer was approximately one-third to one-half of that, right, recently, Mr. Rubino? And the tent didn't cover, right?
Yes, that's correct. The, the tent was, uh, fifty by seventy, uh. No, I'm sorry, twenty by seventy, right, sorry. So, there was a good portion of it that was outdoors, because people. And that's what we find to be the most popular, because people like to be in the sun. Um, the tent did serve a purpose, especially for. Any of those days where it sprinkled or it was, you know, even if it was a little chilly or breezy. Then the tent definitely served the purpose, but it still gave that outside feel.
And the tent, the tent was to the, to the westerly portion of the eight thousand square feet. And there was, there was, if I remember, there was a flap on the tent, right? There, there was a side, a back wall, so that would, I don't know how much. How much, uh, that stops music from spreading, but, uh, I'm a little concerned about playing music out there until eleven o'clock at night, to be honest with. With, uh, with.
Well, you, you're correct, there is, we had, that, the back of the tent on the west side was solid curtains as well as the ends. So, the sound was actually captured very well. Like I said, it's never allowed, it's never allowed. And, you know, the, the tenants that lived in that apartment building on the west side there. When, you know, I offered in the beginning, before we did anything to buy them in AC, AC units, you know, in case. They had to shut windows to, you know, uh, avoid any noise. When I talked to him, he said it never happened. He's like, everything was fine. Um, he said if anything, the tent blocked the noise and, and as I said before, it also blocked the headlights and stuff. That would shine into their windows. They do sit up on the hill a little bit, but he said it just, the tent was actually a, a good buffer zone for them. Compared to what we usually have.
And the, it, did Greg Sweet have to get notice of this, uh, hearing because of, you, you said he's the closest one, right? I mean, was, was that on the notice list, John? Yeah, so he would know that we were hearing this today.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't know that it's in Greg's name. I think it's in a, uh.
But they would have gotten notice.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I have no more questions, Mr. Cagnetta.
Great. Oh, Mr. Daniels, one additional question, Mr. Rubino, um. From the area you had last year, uh, with the tent, the tented area. You're expanding that in what direction now? In southerly and easterly direction?
No, it's actually the same footprint. It's the same overall footprint as we had last year. So, the tent goes to the same spot and we bought it, we bought a bar trailer so that, that's where we serve out of. Um, so that way we can secure it at night, but it's, it's the same footprint. We're not, we're not asking to have any larger.
All right, are you expanding the soft covering at all, the, the tent, the, the rear?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't understand that.
Are you expanding the soft covering, that is the tent?
No, we're not.
Okay, so that's the same as it was previous?
Correct.
In- intended to be, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions, board members? Mr. Kenyon, anything you'd like to add?
Nope, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Um, Jessica, is there anyone out there that may, uh, want to have any comments or questions or otherwise?
Uh, no one has raised their hands.
Still, okay.
Yep, you could.
Um, board members, any, any thoughts? Concerns, motions?
Um, seems like a reasonable proposition to me.
Yeah, I, I agree and, and I, obviously, they've, they've been there a long time. They've, they've, uh, demonstrated their. Uh, relationship with the neighborhood, uh, and, uh, they've done it before. Um, so I don't, I don't have any issue with the expansion.
You serving green ale tonight? That's all I want to know.
Maybe next year.
I'll make a motion.
There, excellent, Mr. Daniel.
Unless the board has any other questions or concerns, I'll go ahead and.
Please.
Okay. Motion to approve the petition of David Barnes, four fifty-six Main Street, Wakefield. For the property better known as the Muse Restaurant, for a special use permit to extend the current temporary. Uh, liquor service area that was, uh, allowed under the COVID nineteen regulations. This would extend the special use permit between May one and December one of each year. The following, uh, individual, and that's, uh, is, uh, under, uh, sections nine oh seven, uh, standards of relief. Uh, under which, uh, we can grant this special use permit. The, uh. The attorney, uh, Kenyon, uh, directed the questioning of Mr. Dan Rubino, who's one of the owners of the facility. And the testimony was that they were not expanding the existing area that they had used in the past summer. But were simply, uh, wishing to extend the, uh, ability to serve liquor. Uh, throughout the, uh, throughout the summer and on into, uh, the December first timeline. It should be noted that the, uh, applicant will require an amended, uh, liquor license, uh, from. The, uh, North Kingston, South Kingston Town Council. Um, there was no opposition to this, uh, uh, special use permit. Uh, the materials entered into the record were site plan and all the other documentation that was identified by the chairman. Uh, when he, uh, read the petition. The board finds that the special use is specifically authorized by the ordinance. Uh, because the special use for, uh, liquor, uh, is, is allowed in a commercial district for a restaurant. And this special use permit just extends that use permit to accommodate the, uh, the exterior area. As, uh, previously described. The board finds that the special use meets all the criteria set forth in a subsection. Once again, because, uh, liquor service is allowed by a restaurant. And, uh, it does require a special use permit to expand that liquor service. Uh, and that is what this, uh, this, uh, granting of this, uh, uh, petition will do. There are no other requirements under, uh, that need to be addressed under section nine oh seven. As there is no change in ingress or e- ingress and egress or, uh, any of the other requirements that are, uh. Uh, needed under section nine oh seven. The, uh, hours of operation, uh, should be noted that will be from eleven AM to eleven PM. There will be no live music and we've been assured by, uh, Mr. Rubino that the, uh. Noise level from existing background music, uh, will be contained. Uh, with that, uh, the only condition, uh, again, is the May first to, uh, December or May first to December timeframe. For, uh, the service of liquor in the expanded area. And with that, I move the, uh, approval of this application.
Fine, thank you, Mr. Daniels. Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosen. Uh, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Jurzak?
Hi.
Mr. Charcawick?
Hi.
Mr. Cagnetta, hi. Motion passed this. Good luck.
Great, thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you, you too. See you out there.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so, uh. Does anyone need to, uh, take a break or? Everybody okay? Okay, uh, next we have the petition of Linda and Franklin Frus, Fruit, Fruit Chee? Of sixty-two Settlement Road, Armston, Connecticut, zero six two three one, for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a ten-foot, five-inch by seven-foot, one-story addition. To the dwelling located in the northwest corner of the property. There are two residential structures located on this property rendering the non-conforming, uh, use. The, uh, the special use permit is required for any addition in enlargement, expansion or intensification of a non-conforming use. Lot size is point five six acres. Special use permit is required per zoning ordinance section two zero three. Special use permit for addition, enlargement, expansion or intensification and nine zero seven are standards of relief. The owner of this property is Linda and Franklin Fruchey, Fruchey Family Irrevocable Trust for the premises located at 35 Maple Drive, South Kingston, assesses map 90-1, lot 109, and is zoned R80. Uh, for this petition, we have an application signed and dated January 15th, 2021. Owner authorization form signed and notarized January 20th, 2021. 200-foot radius map and a butter's list drawing, which are three pages, existing kit condition survey, Fontaine Land Surveying, Michael Fontaine, PLS stamped and dated November 11th, 2020. Legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and notarized affidavit of mailing. And, uh, correspondence by Russell, uh, Barube of 15 Maple Drive dated March 12th, 2021, with response from the building official dated March 12, 21, 2021, and Sarah Davis of 35 Maple Drive. Um, and who is here for this petition?
Uh, I am Franklin Fruchey.
Fruchey. Okay, great. I was close, but not. Um, so could you please, uh, spell your name for the, uh?
F R A N K L I N F R U C C E.
And are you going to be the only one speaking tonight?
No, this is, uh, Jonathan Fruchey, his son.
Okay, and spell your name, please, Jonathan.
Yeah, J O N A T H A N, same last name, F R U C C E.
And you guys both, uh, swear to tell the whole truth enough about the truth?
Yeah, yes, I do.
Excellent. Great. So go ahead, tell us what you'd like to do.
Uh, on the existing property, it, it is, uh, L-shaped in the back there, and I'd like to square it to the 77 square feet and bring it up to the roof line and do modifications to that, uh, a- as needed.
So, so this is Jonathan. Um, we had it surveyed and, you know, the property's been in the family for about 40 years. Um, there's a, a second structure on the back of the land that's been dormant for, you know, 10 to 20 years. Uh, so we're hoping to, uh, change the roof line, you know, add windows in, get some more airflow through there. Um, I think in talking to Mr. Gorman, he'd said we couldn't change the roof line. Uh, so the objective would be to, uh, again, uh, within parameters, uh, add windows and I think in the drawings, as Frank had said, um, you know, build out about 70 square feet um, for, you know, use and storage is, is the main objective.
So, and Jamie, tell me about, uh, not changing the roof line. What, what do they mean by that?
So Chairman, the, I think the original conversation was, if you look at the site plan, the west side, the cottage is within the setback, the required setback. Um, the roof line, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Fuji, but you were planning on raising the roof to accommodate a different pitch, taller windows. And so I informed him that more or less the special use permit and the dimensional variance um, couldn't be in conjunction. So that was the basis for it.
Okay. Do you, you guys understand why you, you couldn't change the roof line?
Yeah, yes. I, I mean, I understand it. It was, I think, because part of it, as we look at it, I think the rules were within 15 feet of the property line. So I think one part of it's 16 feet and the other part is 13 feet. So, um, you know, that's, that's what I extracted from it, but.
Mainly, you can't ask for two things. You can't ask for a dimensional variance and you can't use, ask for a special use at the same time.
Okay.
Um, so that's, that's the only reason why.
Okay.
So you can, you know, so that's why. All right. Um, so, uh, anything else you want to add to that? Or board members, do you have questions to what's been stated so far?
Um, you know, this is, uh, Tom Daniels. A couple of questions. Is, is that, uh, occupied at the current time?
No.
No.
What's, what's the intent of, uh, enlarging it?
Well, we want to use part of it for an office and the rest for storage, you know?
So it's not intended to be a residence?
No.
That is correct. I, I think originally, the origin of the property was the previous owners, and I think it was acquired back in the early eighties. I think it was an in-law apartment for the owner's son. Um, but yeah, I mean, it hasn't been occupied in, in 20-plus years, but, you know, just to get some more space. So personally, I'd like to use it, uh, for an office in the summer, um, and to also have some storage down there.
Okay. Do you have any, uh, any plumbing in the building?
Uh, there is, uh, it's not, there, there was, it's not active.
Okay. So, uh, no need for any, uh, septic or, or sewage disposal in the building?
Uh, not that we're aware of at this time.
Okay. And your intent is to use it for your own use, uh, as opposed to a rental?
Yes, 100%.
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, any other board members' questions?
Yeah, uh, this is Bill Rosen. I have, uh, a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the main residence, is that in use now?
Yes.
Are you living there?
It's a summer place, our summer home.
It's a summer home. It's not used in the winter?
No.
Okay. The shed that's be, there's a shed behind that, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. And that's got some setback problems, correct?
That is, that shed is in the process of being demolished right now because it was constructed 30-plus years and it's falling down. So that won't, that won't be there anymore.
So that's going to be gone?
Yes. Cool. Yeah. So, so as I understand it, um, I think they'd said it was, it was maybe grandfathered in, but, um, we are getting a new shed, um, in, within the parameters of, of the setback as, as we understand it, right? You have a new permit for that? Yes, yeah.
Okay. And, uh, in one, in one of the, one of the letters of op, I think it was opposition, it mentioned two additional structures on the property. That shed is one of those two?
Uh, I, I mean, I, I would as, so yes, I would assume the structure is being, um, and, and they've both been there for 30 to 40 years. But, uh, yeah, I would assume that that's what those structures are.
Yeah. And that shed will be gone, so there'll be only one other structure.
Yes.
And you're not going to use that as, in any rental capacity or anything like that?
No, no, no.
Okay. When, when I was out there, I, I happened to have my wife with me and she looked at that structure and said, seven by 10 and a half, that's smaller than my kids' bedrooms. You're not adding much to that building.
We're just trying to square it and see what, you know, make it just square and see what we can come up with in there.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Rick, Rick Jurzak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jurzak.
Uh, just adding to Mr. Daniel's question before, I'm not sure I understood. Is, is the, uh, there sewer available there in that location?
No, there, there is, there is not. That, that we're aware of, no.
All right. So is this, you say there's some plumbing on the site. Uh, is this building, uh, hooked into the current septic system?
Uh, not that I know of, no.
Okay, so there's no bathroom in there?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other board members' questions? Okay.
Question, um, I just want to.
Yes.
The, we see, received a letter from, um, Russell Barubi, who objected to the, uh, construction and the addition, but asked questions as to, uh, the three new perk test tubes that were installed recently. Can you speak to that?
At some time, I'm thinking of putting in a new septic system and I'm, I've, my person has gone through looking to see what's going to be feasible for that. I think the one out front might be at some time be outdated and I might have to put a new septic system in. And that's why I'm, I'm having soil samples taken. So.
Not connected to town sewage?
No.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
And, and Jessica, I, I, I don't have the other, um, correspondence by Sarah Davis. Um, do you have that open by chance?
I do. I can. Give me one second.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, while, while Jessica's looking that up, I noticed on the list of documents under Sarah Davis, it says 35 Maple Drive. That's what we're considering now, and her address is actually 55 Maple Drive.
I'll make that correction on that. Thank you. Okay, so the document, um, I received an email on March 15th, 2021, Town of South Kingston Zoning Board of Review, Wakefield, Rhode Island, regarding the application for a variance requested by Linda and Frank, Franklin Fruchey, Fruchey Family Irrevocable Trust for premises located at 35 Maple Drive, South Kingston. At the outset, I want to make it clear, I have never met either Linda or Franklin Fruchey. My comments below are not based on any personal interaction or in no way intended to be hostile or vindictive. Under the listed stipulations of these zoning ordinance 203 and 907 special use permit C, it is stated that the granting of the special ordinance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. My strong concern is about the density of construction on Maple Drive and the immediate surrounding area. In contrast to most other properties in the neighborhood, 35 Maple Drive already has, one, the original house, two additions to the original house, one of which is a two-story addition, and number three, two outbuildings. In my opinion, to add another 10 and a half by seven-foot structure on the property would clutter up the landscape and negatively alter the general character of the surrounding area. I chose to live in Rhode Island and on Maple Drive in South Kingston because I treasure the rural nature of this location. From my perspective, yet another building at 35 Maple Drive invites more cars, more people, and more noise. In order to maintain the peace and tranquility that everyone living on Maple Drive enjoys, I am hopeful the zoning board of review will deny the special use permit requested by Linda and Frank Fruchey. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Sarah N. Davis, 55 Maple Drive.
Is, uh, is there, is, is Ms. Davis in the, out, out in the audience by chance, Jessica?
She is not, but, um, Russell is there, so I, I'm assuming that may be Russell Barubi. I don't have a last name on it.
Yeah, well, Russell, uh, had the question as to, as to why the, uh, perk test. But I, I, I guess I'm just a little concerned about the, the, the nature of the, of the questions relative to the intensification um, of, of the site where, um, she's mentioning, uh, more traffic and, 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 uh, increased use of the property. Uh, but that doesn't seem to be the, the, uh, presentation by the applicant. As, you know, and plus, we're not talking about as, uh, you know, as, as restated, it, it doesn't seem to be too, too intensified. Um, so I'm not sure if any, any board members or, or the applicant have any thoughts relative to that, that letter.
And Mr. Cagnetta, maybe I could just ask one question on that. Maybe you could ask Mr. Gorman this question. Uh, what's the, uh, what's the lot coverage requirement for this lot? And do you have any idea where we are on that for percentage coverage right now? I know this is just a small addition, but.
Yeah, the, the maximum lot coverage is 20%. Um, let me see if the lot area is 25,005 or 24,500. So 4,900 square feet would be the maximum allowable lot coverage.
I know I'm putting you on the spot here. Do you have any, do you have any feel where we are right now without this add-on? Are we anywhere near that limit?
I don't believe so, but I can look on Vision real quick if you give me a minute.
Yeah, I would, I would assume not, but, um.
I mean, as, as Mr. Cagnetta said, this is such a small addition, addition to an existing structure, and they seem to be improving the addition, this structure by these improvements. That would lead me to believe that if anything, this would be improving the character of the general area. I don't, I mean, just glancing at this site plan that, that they have submitted, it does not seem like it's overly congested, but I could be wrong, which I have been many times.
It only seems about, about 1,800 feet or so of building, but.
Okay. So, so, so it was a, a reasonable belief that would be, we're not, we're not, even with the add-on, is we're not exceeding the maximum lot coverage uh, per pursuant to zoning ordinance?
No, it looks like the existing, the principal dwelling is 1,900 square foot footprint. And then the cottage is about 400. Um, and then there's a 500 square foot deck, so they're probably about close to 2,000 square feet short of the map, what's allowed.
All right. That was my only question, Mr. Cagnetta.
Okay. Um.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Charcawick.
Um, do, do either of you know how many additional buildings are? I think it's 15 Maple. Is, is, are there more than, you know, two buildings on that property as far as you're aware?
I'm sure you said 15 Maple? You said 15?
Yeah, I believe it's 15.
Uh, yeah, so that, do you know, in, relative to us, I'm, I'm assuming if you're looking at the street from the front door to the left, so on the corner?
Uh, yeah, the one on the corner, a green maple.
Yeah, I think, um, I think two or three. I think there might be, so there was an old tennis court. Um, and I feel like they might have put a structure there, right? And then there might be another, there might be, so there's definitely two. There might be a third. There might be two sheds.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other questions from, uh, board members?
I had a comment, um, that I wanted to make. It was associated with, uh, Sarah Davis's letter, which is why I was asking some of the questions. She talks about two additions to the original house, one of which is the, a two-story addition and two outbuildings. I only see one, and that is coming down, right?
Yes.
Well, the other outbuilding is, is the other dwelling.
Yeah, so I, I think to the point, um, so there was an addition within, what, two years? There was a, um, there was an, so the, think about an L, there was a second story room added. And then to the point, yeah, there's the second dwelling, I guess you would call it, and then the shed is what, what's currently there.
Okay, so there's only going to be two, eventually, there's only going to be two buildings on that property, right?
Yes.
I mean, there's going to be a deck and all that type of stuff attached to the main house, but.
Yes.
Okay. I was just wanted to clarify that because I really didn't understand her reference to two additions and then two outbuildings as if they were different.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know what that's in reference to.
They must be that, she must be talking about the same, and she isn't here, so that makes it difficult. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Um, either of, uh, the applicants want to add anything? You guys, okay?
No, I think I'm comfortable with what we discussed.
Okay. Um, anyone out in the, uh, audience, Jessica, that, uh, wishes to speak on behalf of this petition?
So I have one person in the audience. Um, if you wish to speak, you're going to use the raise hand function. If you're on your computer, you'll see it either on the bottom of your screen or on the top of your screen.
Okay.
Um, he has, so hold on.
Yep.
All right, if you just unmute yourself. Russell?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Russell, yes, you, uh, had written the other letter?
Yes, I did.
Uh, asking the question, um, but go ahead, since you're here.
He answered my question. I, when I saw the perk test going in, I thought it was associated with the expansion of the, the, the expansion of the existing building. But he's answered my question. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, Jessica?
No one else.
Okay. Um, unless anyone has any other questions, um, any discussion, or, uh, would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion, Rick Jurzak.
Mr. Jurzak, please.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition of Linda uh, Fruchey and Franklin Fruchey, okay, for a special use permit uh, with regard to premises located at 35 Maple Drive, South Kingston, Rhode Island, 02879, okay? Uh, the premises consists of a lot with, uh, a house on it and, uh, two small buildings. One of the buildings, uh, is the subject of, of, of this petition, one of the small buildings, okay? Uh, the lot is .56 acres, okay? Uh, the petition of the Fruchey's is to, uh, uh, basically add a small addition, right? Uh, of 10 feet, 5 inches times 7 feet, okay? Uh, to the, uh, one, the existing small outbuilding, okay? And do some various other improvements and outbuilding, uh, to bring it up to, uh, uh, current, uh, contemporary standards, okay? We had both Franklin, uh, Fruchey, uh, and his son Jonathan Fruchey, who were both sworn in, come and testify today. They explained to us that what they intended to do is to utilize that building as an office and for some, uh, storage, okay? They stated that there is no sewer hookup, that the building is not hooked, uh, to a septic system, that there is, uh, some internal plumbing. I'm not quite sure what that means, and, but no toilet in the building, all right? Uh, they stated that they were not planning on. Uh, they stated that they were not planning on renting this building out as a housing unit, all right? Uh, we, uh, queried, uh, the building inspector as to a lot coverage requirements. And he stated that in his opinion, okay, that with regards to, uh, this parcel, uh, we did not have a, uh, any, uh, uh, exceeding of the permissible lot coverage per our zoning ordinance, okay? So that was okay, all right? I would like to, uh, in my, in my, uh, motion to approve, I would like to s- cover the requirements under nine oh-seven B of our ordinance, all right? In that, uh, number one, the special unit, special use permit is specifically authorized in this case under section two oh-three of our ordinance. Number two, that the special use permit, uh, meets all criteria set forth in this subsection. I might add that, that clearly, uh, the, the, this addition is not more than fifty percent for the record of the existing structure, okay? And that the granting of the special use permit would not alter the general character of the surrounding area. Uh, we, with regard to, uh, various criteria, okay? Uh, I would like to make a part of this motion, okay? Uh, the site plan, okay, in the application, all right? Excuse me, I have to try to read this. The, which is, uh, existing condition survey, uh, thirty-five Maple Drive, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, prepared for Jonathan Frucci, uh, and it, I believe, is dated, uh, and I'm not sure I see the date, but, uh, yeah. Eleven-eleven, I guess that's two, two-twenty, all right? Uh, as well as, uh, the other renderings that are attached to the application showing us what these gentlemen expect to do on the property, okay? Having that in mind, I see nothing else I want to cover, and I asked the board to grant this petition.
Thank you, Mr. Jurzak. Uh, is there anyone that will second? Wow, uh, second by Mr. Charkwick, uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Jurzak.
Hi.
Mr. Charkwick. Mr. Daniels.
Hi.
Mr. Rosen.
Hi.
Mr. Kegged, aye, motion passes, good luck.
Thank you, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night, stay safe, thank you.
Thank you. And before I read the last one in, Jessica, there is someone here for this one, right, for Paul and Phyllis Corstein?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so, uh, this is the petition of Paul R. and Phyllis T. Corstein, Corstein, three ninety-two, uh, Stony Fort Road, Saunders Town, Rhode Island, zero-two-eight-seven-four. For a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a second-story addition above an existing breezeway and attached garage. The proposed addition will follow the existing structure's footprint and will be located at fourteen-point-eight feet from the side property line. The required yard setback is twenty feet, requests of five-point-two feet is, uh, of relief is requested. The lot size is point-six-nine acres. Dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance section two-zero-seven. Non-conforming lots of record building setback requirements in section nine oh-seven are standards of relief. The owner of the property is Phyllis T. and Paul R. Carstein for premises located at three ninety-two Stony Fort, Fort Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, um, assessors map seventeen, lot twenty-three, and is zoned R forty. For this application, we have the application signed and dated February ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Um, the owner authorization form signed and notarized February eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Two-on-your-foot radius map and a butters, uh, list. The comprehensive boundary survey, Christine, Christopher G. Palmer, PLS stamped and dated January eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Existing and proposed elevations and floor pa- plans, including seven pages. And then the legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and notarized affidavit of mailing. Um, is there someone that is here for this application?
Yes, I am Phyllis T. Corstein, this is my husband, Paul R. Corstein, will be speaking tonight and answering your questions.
Great, thank you, Philip, uh, Phyllis. Having a tough time, uh, but so could you please, uh, spell your name for the, um, record?
Phyllis, P-H-Y-L-L-I-S, Corstein, C-O-R-I-S-T-I-N-E.
And Paul, P-A-U-L, Corstein, C-O-R-I-S-T-I-N-E.
And you both swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I swear.
Uh, so please tell us what you'd like to do.
Thank you. Um, Paul and I own the property, and we have owned it for about nineteen years. It's a lovely house, we're very happy here. Uh, we'd like to make an improvement to the house whereby we add additional square footage to our second floor to go over our existing breezeway and our existing single-car garage. Um, we'd like to stay within our three-bedroom septic system, which, which we have, and is in good working condition. Um, but we'd like to in- increase the number of full bathrooms in the house. So currently, the house was built and has right now one full bath and one half bath. So we would like to add an additional bathroom to our second floor for our use where our master bedroom is. And we'd also like to bring our, um, laundry area up into the second level.
Okay, um, and, and it looks like it's sort of just working with the existing proportions of the home. And, uh, just simply going up.
Yes, so, um, we want to stay within the, uh, existing envelope and footprint of the house and, um, just to increase the square footage by going upstairs and using that space. Uh, if you look at the site plan, uh, Jessica, would you please show the site plan? Thank you. We've notified our neighbors and particularly the neighbor that is closest to us as the butter. Our next-door neighbor is Scott and Lori Riley. We've shown them our plans and discussed it with them, and, uh, they are in support of us doing so. Thanks, yeah, I can see, it looks great.
And so that would be the folks to the west?
That's correct. On Stony Fort Road, their address is four oh-four Stony Fort Road. And they've lived there about, hmm, five or six years.
And, uh, it looks like that, that there was some screening, kind of in between anyway, between the two properties?
Yeah, right now, there is, uh, it's kind of a brushy area with some undergrowth, some bushes, some small trees, and there is, uh, a little bit of fencing. So there's a little bit of a visual barrier between the two properties.
Anything else, or, uh?
Well, we're seeking, the, we're seeking the variance because the way the house was built, uh, one of the corners is too close to the setback. And so once we became aware of that, we, we had the full survey done. And now we're, um, applying and asking for the relief from that.
Okay, and, and like you said, you spoke to the neighbors, uh, they don't, they don't have any issue, at least they haven't, uh, sent anything in. Um, and, and is there a shed sort of right on the property line right now, as it is?
Well, you know, it was a little bit close, uh, it was that way when we moved in, and it didn't seem like a big deal to us at the time because we weren't exactly sure where that property line was. But, uh, now that we've had the survey done, we've realized their shed, um, is actually on the property line.
Okay. All right, uh, board members, any questions for the applicants?
Eric Jurzak here, just one question. Uh, how close is that neighbor that gave your approval? How close is their house to their property?
Their house is approximately forty feet from the property line. And that particular wall is, uh, a screened-in porch for them.
Did you, you, uh, you didn't build a house, you moved, you bought it existing?
That's correct, we are the, the second owners.
Okay, fine, that's okay, yep, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, Mr. Jurzak. Uh, any other board members' questions?
Yeah, this is Bill Rosen, uh, the setback you, relief you're, uh, pursuing is to the east of, is that correct, to the east side of the property?
I believe it's the west, Mr. Rosen.
To the west, yes, I'm looking at it right now, uh, sometimes I get my directions wrong. And you're only seeking five feet or so, but that was already there.
That's correct.
And you're correcting that, uh, setback problem.
Yes.
So the footprint of the, uh, the, the addition, which is going to go over the breezeway and the garage and the second floor, uh, will stay within the footprint of the house that's there right now, correct?
Yes, it will, and we won't be expanding beyond the current roof line, and we're making it, you know, look proportional to the house. It's a nice house, and, and it should stay in that nice conservative look that looks balanced like it was supposed to be like that.
Yeah. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other board members' questions? Okay, um, and, uh, Phyllis or Paul, would you guys like to add anything?
Well, we've enjoyed living here, we hope that, um, you know, if this is granted, this will enable us to stay in the house and have a laundry that's not in the basement. Seems a little safer to us to be up, you know, with our bedroom.
Okay, uh, Jessica, is there anyone out there that, uh, would want to speak on behalf of this?
There's no one out there, period.
Hey, uh, scared them all off, um, okay. So, board members, any other questions or, uh, discussion or motions?
I can make a motion if you want.
Uh, I can make a motion if.
Go ahead, let's, you could go right to it, Mr. Rosen.
Okay.
I'll yield.
I'll make a motion of approval for, uh, the petition of, uh, Paul R. and Phyllis T. Cor- Steen. Uh, at three ninety-two Stony Fort Road, Saunders Town, Rhode Island, oh-two-eight-seven-four, for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance. Uh, what the applicants are looking for is for relief from the setback requirements of twenty feet associated with the house that, and garage and breezeway that are presently there. They want to add a second story to, uh, to, uh, add to or make, uh, master bedroom, move that master bedroom, and also move the laundry upstairs. That's, uh, second story will be over the existing breezeway and garage associated with the house. A dimensional variance, they found out, was required because the setback, uh, problem was already there existing prior to them buying the house, what did they say, nineteen years ago, I think, uh, as such. As a result, uh, I will add, the board finds that the special, this is, no, this is dimensional variance, where is that? Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Uh, the board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure, and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and is not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant. Uh, the reason they're, they're seeking this, um, dimensional variance is because the setback requirement was exceeded prior to them moving into the house, and they recently found out that they needed to put that in, so the dimensional variance, if it hadn't been there, um, they wouldn't have to seek this dimensional variance. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. They're just trying to, uh, bring it within the code associated with our ordinances. The board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. It's really just going to add to the character of the, of the surrounding area, it's a very nice area over there on Stony Fort. Uh, I visited it briefly one day. The board finds the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary. Uh, that's for sure, because the, uh, variance was already in place when they moved into the house, and they weren't aware of it. The board finds that the hardships suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. Uh, because, uh, they could have gone forward with this if they hadn't discovered it on their own, that the dimensional variance or the setback requirement was exceeded. Uh, as a result, I move approval of this, uh, petition.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Uh, is there a second? Is, uh, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Rosen.
Hi.
Mr. Jurzak.
Hi.
Mr. Daniels.
Hi.
Mr. Charkwick.
Hi.
Mr. Kegged, aye, motion passes, good luck.
Thank you, board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, with fifteen, fourteen minutes to spare, uh, we have, uh, two petitions that are left, uh, the petition of William Bodnar of eight-eighteen Brookwood Way, and then the petition of Stephen R. Cooper of two-eighty-three High Street. Um, and, uh, it looks like we're going to continue these to the twenty for, no, March twenty-fourth, this coming Wednesday. Does anyone have any particular concerns or issue with that?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to make sure that both applicants are available for the twenty-fourth?
Yes, please. Sorry.
All right, Mr. Cooper has his hand raised.
Okay. I am available.
You are available, thank you very much.
I, I'm not sure, like, it can be, uh, I, I, I hope so, I'll have to try to move some things around, um. It's not something you want to try to do in twelve minutes?
Um, I mean, we, we, we could, you are next on the agenda, if, if folks, uh, don't mind sticking around just to see this one through. Um, doesn't seem like there's anybody on the call that would be against it, per se. So, I, we definitely couldn't get to both, uh, but, but, Mr. Bodnar, you are next on the, on the agenda, so we can, uh, do yours, so, um, so we'll jump right, well, first, Mr. Cooper, are you okay if, if we, uh, continue yours to next week?
Oh, it doesn't, uh, appear there is an option, so I guess I'll be fine.
No, no, okay, great, uh, so can we get a motion to, uh, continue, Mr. Cooper, until, uh, next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
So moved.
Okay, um, can we get a, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, Mr. Charkwick, um, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay. Uh, motion passes, we'll do that next week, Mr. Cooper, thank you very much, uh, I appreciate it. Um, so we'll hear the petition of William Bodnar of eight-eighteen Brookwood Way of Chigo, California, nine-five-nine-two-six, for dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct an accessory apartment above an existing detached garage. The living area within the accessory department will be seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, the permitted, uh, the maximum allowed. The proposed, uh, building height will be twenty-five feet. The maximum accessory building height permitted in our twenty zone is fifteen feet, so there's a, a leaf of ten feet requested. The lot size is one-point-one-seven acres, dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance section four-zero-one. Schedule of dimensional regulations in section nine-zero-seven standards of relief. Schedule of dimensional regulations in section nine zero seven standards of relief. The owner of the property is Pamela and William W. Bodnar for premises located at five sixty-three Allen Ave, South Kingston Assessor's Map forty-seven dash three, lot seven, and is zoned R twenty. And for this application, I Okay, well, Mr. Bodnar, why don't you go first and then I can circle back and talk about what you have for a document. So Mr. Bodnar, please spell your name.
William Bodnar, W I L L I A M, Bodnar, B O D N A R.
Okay, great. And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. So tell us what you'd like to do.
We would like to build an apartment fifty square feet above the existing garage. The existing footprint of the garage, I believe, is around nine hundred square feet, so it'll be smaller. And we've submitted some drawings, so you can take a look at the drawings there. But the existing garages, the walls of the existing garage are approximately eight feet high. So there's no possible building above and keeping within the existing height limitations. There just wouldn't be enough room for someone to stand up above there. So we're asking for this relief, so we could build that. The building design we are proposing, as shown by our drawings, minimizes the structure height. There's going to be no attic space, so we'll just be insulating right above, you know, the existing space in the, I guess, two by twelves that are going to be put up there. The proposed design is ten feet higher. If it is allowed at twenty-five feet, it will still be lower than the two-story residence that's on the property. There also exists an array of trees, I believe they're mostly evergreen, that are between the proposed apartment and the neighboring property. And I've submitted a few photographs that were just taken a few weeks ago. Show the trees. There's one view from the west looking to the east at the adjacent, towards the adjacent property, and there is another photo that was taken from the street side, which gives a little bit of better indication of the height of the trees. But I believe all those trees right now are over twenty-five feet, so we don't think there'll be any issue with sight of the neighbors. Yes, it's this drawing we're looking at. The closest neighbors are to the right of those trees. Here we go.
So, Mr. Bodnar, are you deliberately sort of keeping back your doghouse dormer just from the edge to stay within that seven hundred and fifty square feet?
Yes, that is correct. A few years ago, I went down to the, the town hall and spoke to the engineers. And they told me that you could apply to have a, an apartment, they called an accessory structure. And they said it's seven fifty square feet. But they said, you have an existing structure of, I think it was nine square feet, they said. So we just approve a variance, but when I, when I started applying for this, Jamie told me, he said, that's a different, different type of petition, I guess, so we just limited to seven hundred and fifty square feet. The staircase will be inside the garage. So you would go into the front door and the staircase would be in the garage, but that would not be part of the existing apartment.
And you're going to use, you're going to be within the existing footprint?
Oh, yeah. Yes, exactly. The views that you, that are shown like that, the, I guess, there's the southwest elevation. That's, that's, that's the existing garage there. There's existing garage door and then a small entry door to the right. And that, and so there's a little bit maybe of overhang, but the apartment, yes, is going to be a little less than the footprint of the existing garage.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's, needs replacing right now anyways.
What does the, the, which part?
Roof of the existing garage. Yeah, so we're, you know, we'll be taking care of that, obviously, at the same time.
So, so that hip roof, that hip roof is structurally kind of deficient at this point, too?
It's okay, but the very top part of it, at the peak, they have some plexiglass that they had put in. The house was, the house on the property was built in nineteen thirty-two, owned by the same family up until, I think, six years ago. I'm not sure how old the garage is. But it's underneath that stone, as you can see, it's in front of you. There's structural concrete blocks. And my son's a civil engineer, said that thing is incredibly sturdy.
Oh, good, good. Okay, so, board members, do you have questions for Mr. Bodnar?
I, sorry. I do, I have several. Tom Daniels, Mr. Bodnar. Do you, do you live on the premises currently?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Do you live on the premises currently?
Currently, both my wife and I are from Rhode Island. And we're looking to move back there. I have, still have all my family back there, but we're currently living in California.
So the current structure is a rental property?
Right now, there are tenants in there. They are moving out in June and we're going to be going back there in July, but we're trying to work with them because, as you probably all are well aware, it's very difficult for people to find properties to live in back there and they're trying to buy a house and they're having quite a problem, so. We, we want to, you know, we're doing everything we can to make sure they have a place, so I don't want to kick them out right now. They're going through a real stressful time.
So why would you need an accessory apartment above the garage?
I have two older sisters and an older brother back there and, and I, I hope one day to have one of them live there. They are both, they're all married, but in the event that something happens to them, I think this would be a great thing. I like to now, when I get any younger, I'd like to have, you know, part of my family together and it's just a plan for that.
One of the reasons I asked the question is, you probably know, we have an objector. And the objector has raised the issue of whether or not this is intended to be a rental property, as is your current property.
Well, actually, I did not know that there was an objector. So that's news to me. I was, I didn't know if I
Okay, well, may, maybe we, we'll probably, we'll probably post that document on the screen, so you'll have an opportunity to respond to it. In addition, it looks like you need a new septic system to accommodate that apartment, correct?
Correct. I, I started the septic process last July because if we couldn't get a septic, obviously, there would be no reason to go forward with this. And the septic was approved by the state, I believe, last month, finally. And, and I believe I submitted the site plan, which is the site plan that was submitted to the Rhode Island Septic Division, and that's what that's what.
Do you have either a preliminary or a final approval on that septic at this point?
It was approved. That's what this site plan is that I submitted, and I think you have it in your records. It's a planned view. And this is what we received back from the state, so it was approved in February. As I said, we started the process last July, but it was, it was approved.
Okay.
February, yes.
You know, I don't see that as part of the record. You didn't supply that as part of your application?
Well, I sup, I supplied the site plan.
Understand, but not, not the, not the, not the DEM approval?
I don't think so. I have it, I have it right here in front of me. I can hold it up in, in front of the screen. I have it in my hand.
Okay.
But I did not, I did not actually make that part of the record. I apologize, I did not know that was required.
Let, if we can, could we go back to the letter of objection because I'm going to ask you to respond to it? In particular, the, the last paragraph that states, Mr. Bodnar is an absentee landlord and is looking to generate more income for himself with this new addition. He will not have to see or live with this and so on. The person's obviously not happy with the, with the application. So that's why I raised the question of rental property and what your intended use is for this, should this variance be granted?
Excuse me, I'm just reading this. Well, you know, I'm not on the property right now. I can't, and I can see what they say that this would this would be something that they see, but we've designed it, so on that side of the structure, there is only one small window. The windows we're going to put it in are, are to the front and to the west side opposite of this person's house. So in the design, we took everything into consideration as far as, you know, the, the sight and of what they'd have to see. I'm not, I'm not sure that I agree with what she's saying, that she'd be able to see it. I've, times I've spent in a house, I've never been able to see anyone. The, these people moved in after we purchased the house. I've never met them. I, I'm sure they're, you know, they're very sincere in what they're saying, but I've never been able to see their house from our property. Now, I didn't stand on the roof. Well, actually, I did stand on the roof of the garage. I don't remember looking towards their direction because at the time I was repairing a leak on the roof. But.
I guess, I guess, Mr. Bodnar, my concern is not so much the view of the neighbor or the structure itself. My concern is whether you intend to realize greater financial gain, because if you do, and if that's your primarily, primary purpose here, I for one can't, can't support the application, so I would need you to address that a little clearer.
Sure. No, we don't have any plans to rent this out immediately. As I said, I don't even know how long it'll take to build it, but we we possibly could live there. As I said, the apartment, my wife and I. So I, I, no, I'm not saying that this is for rental purposes alone. I've never, I've never talked to these people, so I'm not sure why they're saying that, because I've never had a conversation with them.
How long has the current property been rented? The main house, main property?
Two years, not quite two years, that people have been living there.
So have you ever lived in a property?
I spent probably six to seven months living in the property, working on fixing it up.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I was there at the property. And as I said, there's a young couple and a, they're, they're living in the property now. And you know, they're looking to buy a house, but I'm not, I'm not sure if they'll be staying there or not.
Any other board members' questions for the applicant? No. Do you want to add anything else, Mr. Bodnar?
No, other than the fact that, you know, we, we worked with a local designer to design the, to building to, to blend in to the neighborhood as, as best as we could. As I said, we didn't put windows on that side of the house. We minimized the windows on that side of the house intentionally, so there would be, there'd be nothing to look at. Where back side of the property, I think, you know, our, beyond our garage, there's, the property is bordered on three sides by open space. So it's, it's quite a deep lot and the neighbors both, to both sides of us and approximately where the one on the left side ends about where the garage is. The, the people writing this, I think their, their lot goes a little bit, a bit further back than the actual garage, but then right beyond that is open space, so. I, I think that's, that's all I can, I can say to that.
Okay. Any other board members' questions for Mr. Bodnar? All right. Jessica, is there anyone out there that is, wants to speak on behalf of this petition?
No one's present.
Okay. I, yeah, I guess, I mean, I know, I know, I know the town has been encouraging sort of the utilization of, of smaller apartments and, and to encourage sort of the accessory apartment in properties. And, you know, this, this one sort of does suit that bill. And, I mean, personally, I just don't feel that it's an intensification that, that would create a disturbance, being that it's only six, seven hundred and fifty square feet. So I, I, I don't have any problem with it in particular. But I don't know how other board members feel.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think it's obvious how I feel. I, I'm not sure what the hardship is here. We, the owner doesn't live here. He's indicated he may possibly return. I, I, I don't see the hardship, frankly, other than financial gain, build it, rent it, the same as he's done with his house for two years. I would say that if he moves back to this house and comes back with it before us and wants to move his relatives into an expansion over the garage, then by all means. But at this stage of the game, I, I can't get my head around the, the hardship here. It's, it, to me, it's, it doesn't meet the not-for-financial-gain test, so that, that's, that's where I'm, I'm at.
Okay. Any other board members' thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill Rosen. I am a little uncomfortable with the fact that the Davises, I think that's their name. A letter, but I don't have their names on it for some reason.
I, I believe it was Nelson, right?
Nelson, yes. Oh, there it is, Nelson, Theresa Nelson, yes. I'm a little uncomfortable with the fact that they put in an opposition letter, which is fairly strong, and yet they're not here to say anything about it. I don't know whether it's appropriate to continue this until next week, so that they have the opportunity to come before the board. I kind of agree with Tom that they, that they level something that seems reasonable to me in terms of the financial gain issue. And thus, I don't. Well, I'll just say that I'm uncomfortable with, with the fact that they're not able to express their, their opinion.
Bill, this is Amy. Remember that when we continue applications, we don't re-advertise them. So unless they're checking the Secretary of State website, or unless they've been in contact with Jess or Jamie, they would have no way of knowing about the continuance.
Okay, thank you.
Am I allowed to contact them since this is the first I've heard of this? Am I allowed to contact them since this is the first I've heard of this? And I wish I would have had an opportunity to see it before then, but I guess I, I just didn't. I'm not sure I didn't do my homework or I just wasn't aware of it.
Well, I guess you could request the continuation if we feel that, that you may not have the votes to, to pass. And that if we want a clarification, you know, from, from the neighbor. That, that might help. Get a pass because we do need four of the five voting for it. And, and without taking a poll right now, you know, we're definitely, Mr. Daniels doesn't seem like he's sure of voting for it. And Mr. Rosen is unsure, so. If Mr. Rosen feels that, that trying to get more clarification on their objection would help make his decision, then we can go that route.
I, yes, I think that would be my direction, but I'm not going to sway the vote one way or the other at this point.
What about the other members, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm on the same page.
Okay.
Yeah, I concur, Mr. Daniels. I mean, I'm, I'm less concerned with the fact that the objector's not here. It's just, I'm not really seeing how the, you know, how the standards met, but I think, you know, it wouldn't hurt to have, to have the objector speak.
Okay. Mr. Jurzak, how are you feeling about it?
Well, I'm, I'm, I hate to say it, I'm more along your lines, Mr. Cagnetta. You know, as we know, hardship is a very nebulous concept. At best, okay? But, I mean, we do have neighbors who are concerned, so maybe it would be nice to hear from the neighbors. Is that hedging enough for you, Mr. K?
Perfect, yeah. So, Mr. Bodner, it seems like that there's some hesitation. I think if certainly you were to help get some of the concerns clarified by the neighbor. Could help. So if, if you want to, if you want, we can continue it until next week and see if you can have a conversation with them. It doesn't seem like you can do much to reduce the height by the five feet to be within your, your height restriction. So it sounds like that, that having their support would, would be the, something that can help you out.
Sure. Am I, will I be able to receive a copy of the letter, so I'll know who to contact or see what, you know? I just saw it on the screen here.
Everything is online and has been online, so if you go to the South Kingstown website where you'd looked previously, all correspondence, it gets entered online as I receive them.
Hey, thank you. And that's my fault. I didn't check that.
Okay, so, so you want to do that, so we can continue this until March twenty-fourth? And we'll hear you first and hopefully by next week. You can get some sort of answer from them.
And if I don't, it'll be real quick.
Sounds great. So can someone make a motion to continue the petition of William Bodnar? Till March twenty-fourth?
I'll make the motion to continue till March twenty-fourth.
By Mr. Rosen, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Charke Wick, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay, any opposed? No. Okay, Mr. Bodner, we'll see you next week. Thank you. And should we just call it right here? Is there anything else we need to do? Jessica, should we do?
But, Mr. Bodner, before you go, I just want to advise you, you will receive a new meeting link. The link for tonight will not work next week. So you'll be getting a new email from me tomorrow or Friday.
Thanks, Jess.
You're welcome. And then for the board, I need minutes approved. Please.
So we have the minutes for two seventeen twenty-one?
And twenty-four, yes.
And two twenty-four, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February twelfth, seventeenth and twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-one.
Made by Mr. Rosen is, can I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Charke Wick, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, any opposed? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Weeks.
Yes, see you next week. Thank you very much, everybody.
Mr. Rosen, Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
One quick question for you. When did you start teaching organic chemistry at URI? What year?
Nineteen seventy.
You know what? I was a student of yours.
Oh, no.
Honestly, God, I was in pharmacy originally.
No wonder you're so smart.
I probably had six, seven thousand pharmacy students.
I know you did. A big auditorium, Edwards Auditorium, I think it was, but it was an exciting class, I have to say. I then went out, I changed the law after that.
All right.
Well, you turned out okay.
All right.
Awesome. Happy St. Patty's, everyone.
Thank you.
You as well.
Bye-bye.
Good night.